Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Nicky, you want to give me a roll call?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bone. We'll start with you.
I am here.
Perfect. Supervisor Bushnell?
Good morning.
Supervisor Madron?
Present.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Here.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. I was just trying to deal with that one time.
I'm sorry, too. I'm still here, though.
Those are the voices in his head.
I'm trying to mute her. So, thank you. We're done.
Nick, I'm in fake.
Tracy, mute yourself.
I just muted her.
You said that a minute ago. We please live our glorious life. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam CAO, what do you want to do to us today?
Good morning, Chair Bone. There is one modification to the agenda. Item D-24 is being pulled for discussion.
Okay. Is that it? That's it?
I believe so. Looking at Supervisor Wilson, he was debating on one other item. Do you want to leave?
Well, Ms. Warren, is there anyone here to speak to 23? Is that the one?
Item D-23, maybe a quick show of hands, is the sheriff's contract with Half Moon Pictures. Is anybody here on that item?
Is there anyone raising hands for that online, Nicky?
There's, I have an attendee. I don't remember the number, but there's a handle on that. Don't know if that's what it's for.
I believe they have something sent to you guys to be read. Do you want to read it for him? You can.
Read it for him. I don't know what that is.
It's for D-24.
I know what you're here for, yeah. I was just wondering about D-23. Because, okay, then we'll just keep it as it is. Thanks.
Okay. Just the removal of D-24 for discussion.
Bad boys, bad boys. Okay. I'll bring it back to the board. Anybody have any discussion, or I'll bring it up to public comment. Anything on the board? Public comment?
Good morning, Chair Bone, members of the board. Sean Quincy, deputy county administrative officer, staff to the Measure Z effort. And I just want to thank Mr. Zeimer for his service to Measure Z. Mr. Zeimer was on the committee since the very beginning, and his contributions can't be overstated. His commitment to public process and transparency is notable. He's always been forward-looking. He could see trends before they were coming and was always a stalwart in trying to point out his concerns. His frankness and willingness to ask tough questions is to be admired. I believe he was the spark for a lot of the changes that occurred with Measure Z over the last two-plus years. And that is something that our community will reap the benefits of for years to come. And I believe that our community is safer and on a more sustainable path because of his efforts. So, thank you to Mr. Zeimer, and I look forward to working with Mr. Fierben in the future. Thank you.
I also would like to thank Mr. Zeimer. I was at some of the first meetings with him, and his main thing is he wanted it all put in to pay down your pears so that we'd be more caught up. That's what he started with. Of course, that didn't happen. Some ways, it might have been great, but anyway, any of these people who serve on these committees, you know, it's a very lot of times put into it, and I think they did a great job. I also wish to speak on item D-12, your budget. See that coming forward? Looks like this is the last hurrah. It's getting approved. You put a lot of time and effort into it, and that's appreciated. You folks totally understand the budget, as far as I can tell, and that's important. On the other hand, we have the opposite end of the spectrum in Blue Lake, and I have what we call bobbleheads. And here's the budget. I don't think they understand it at all. It's really a mess. They just sit here like this, you know, and there's four of them there that just every single meeting won't really understand the budget. We do have one council member who does want to know about the budget the same as you, and that's always appreciated. The other thing I did notice on here, as you folks know, I keep track of your monthly expenses quite a bit, and I did see a little anomaly. Unfortunately, it was explained to me that there was, two of you went to a certain function. I think it was in Yosemite. One person apparently showed quite a difference, but one person was partially compensated by another outlet. So, I always appreciate you going to these places. And I know it's sometimes expensive, but that's where we get a lot of our work done. So, I think I'll probably, I did have a question on, I think it was on the budget also. There was a report that I think Supervisor or Chair Bone asked for regarding prior expenses for the Ink people and some of their things there. I'm curious to see that one. My curiosity of that is how much money are we paying for administration? Because in your budget, we're paying something like 20% to your staff to do it, and there might be another 15%, or maybe it's 10% in 15, 25 total. So, I am curious. I'd like to see that, if that ever does come around, and see exactly how much administration's being charged by these groups to administer our funds. I think that'll do it for the day. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Chair Bone, I do have a caller online.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 4466, star six, unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, hello. My name is Gordon Claverty. I'd like to talk on the consent calendar for item 24, the agreement with the sheriff's.
Gordon, Gordon, Gordon?
Yep.
This item's been polled, so it's not on the consent calendar anymore?
Oh, wonderful. All right.
Are you talking 24? Can I get clarity? Are you talking 24 or 23?
If it's already been polled, that's fine.
If you, Gordon, if you're calling for that, what is it, the half? D-23 for the production? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, that's D-23. Go ahead. We'll start your time.
Okay, sorry. Yes, well, then, if it hasn't been polled, it should be polled. There needs to be a bigger discussion about the impact of these shows on not only community policing, but also our community at large. And I think it needs to be opened up for more public discussion, especially how we want Humboldt portrayed on national TV. Thank you.
Thank you, and Chair Bone. There are no more callers.
Great. Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board. Anybody have anything?
Can, in, I do, it would be nice if the sheriff could speak to this item. I apologize for not pulling it off, but if he's here or someone representing the sheriff is here today.
We're going to bounce back. I don't have a problem with it. I just, we tried to get it. Anyway, it's just a matter of timing.
Sheriff Hansel's online.
Sheriff Hansel is. He has a medical issue at home, so.
Okay. Happens.
Sheriff Hansel's right here.
Sheriff Hansel, you want to speak to this, please?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the question, and I understand the total concern. The reason why this show is going to be, you know, important here, and the reason why I'm pushing this forward, is to talk about and to highlight the professional law enforcement services that we do here in Humboldt County. The one thing that we do that's, you know, that's really, I think, special and unique is that we do take pride in our community policing and do take pride in how we offer compassionate law enforcement services. And I think this is an opportunity for us to highlight Humboldt County, put Humboldt County on the map, and also talk about how California law enforcement is different. And California law enforcement does show that, you know, we do hold people accountable, but we also are all about building trust within our community. And this is another, you know, another layer that we can present to our community and to highlight, again, the professional services that we do here. And so, this is going to be, again, a trial run. We're going to see how this goes, if this does get approved. And that we do have editing credits here, and that we can make sure that the things that are presented in the media does correspond with how we view law enforcement. And so, this is going to be, again, very important. And again, another thing that we can highlight, the professionalism that we have here at the sheriff's office and in Humboldt County.
Supervisor Wilson?
Hey, Billy. So, Sheriff Hansel, there was, I think, I read an article, and the article expressed some concern about would these, would cameras and crews get in the way of the performance of the duties of the, of our sheriff's department, and then specifically deputies? And do we hold any liability in that? Where does that lie?
Yeah, we, the cameramen do have some strict guidelines that they are not to interfere, that they're to be on the sidelines viewing from an area that is accessible to the public. They're not going to go into people's homes without consent. They're not going to, they don't have the same ability to go into private areas as law enforcement does. So, they have to hang on the street. They have to hang in public areas. And they're going to be back from the scene and capture these incidents that do occur within Humboldt County and with our sheriff's deputies. Of course, you know, we have liability every day that we do law enforcement, and that any time that we have a ride-along or anyone with us, you know, of course, we share that liability with that. But this company does have insurance. They've been doing it for the last several years. They are reputable, and so, they are professional, and they do know their stuff. And so, that's why I'm willing to go and do this agreement with them, as long as the county agrees with it. And again, it's an area that we can look at and, you know, give this a trial run. And if everything works, you know, we can do an additional year.
Another question. Have you viewed these shows before, or this particular brand of show? And do you feel like it's put communities in a positive light or a negative light? Like, where do you feel like it's done? What do you think about its track record in terms of portraying communities that it's been in?
Yeah, I think this is a really good show that highlights what's going on around the country with crime and law enforcement. I think this gives a real firsthand view of what our deputies are facing out there in the street, what crimes they're facing. You know, a lot of times, we're concerned about mental health, mental illness, drug addiction, theft, violence. And what we're seeing here firsthand is the deputy's point of view on all these incidents. And it gives a better perspective of what the challenges are out there in law enforcement. It gives people perspective of the laws and how they're changing and how it's affecting how we do law enforcement. So, I believe this is a positive thing. I believe that it is ultimately going to be a great thing for Humboldt County. And again, puts us in an area where we can show the professionalism.
Thanks, Billy. I don't know if it's giving me a lot of confidence, but I appreciate your thoughts on it. I mean, I just have a different view, the lens, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. That's enough for me, if any other supervisors have questions.
It's, we're winging it now. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair Bone. Thank you, Sheriff Hansel. Appreciate you being available to respond to this today. And I, like you, and I believe most of our community, really do want to help our community build trust, you know, in our deputies and our law enforcement. And I know it's not on the agenda today, but the grand jury report titled Humboldt County Sheriff's Office Is It A Lack Of Oversight Due To A Lack Of Forsight? As you know, it talks a lot about a law enforcement review board. And the primary purpose is to also build trust in the community with citizen oversight review, like Eureka has. And so, I look forward to the responses to that report. I think it ties back into this whole issue of, you know, oversight, especially reviewing critical incidents like the Cal Poly incident and other things that have happened. So, I look forward to working together with you and your department to, you know, consider those kinds of things that the grand jury has brought forward. So, again, thank you for being here today.
Well, this looks like this was entered into, and we're confirming that it was undertaken. Is that correct?
What?
The access agreement says that it was dated June 4th, and that we're confirming it. So, have we already started working with them, or were we waiting until this came before the board?
Waiting until it came before the board.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah. I mean, I have similar concerns to Supervisor Wilson. I think, you know, there's, and I'm concerned about, we got some public comment asking, you know, us to not confirm this because of concerns that it's really showing people in some way invading their, you know, personal confidence, their privacy to some degree in their worst moments. And I can understand that perspective. I also know a few people have gone into law enforcement because they saw a show like this, and it got them interested, and it seemed like an exciting and interesting career. So, I could see how it could achieve those goals as well. I, I'll say it just makes me a little anxious for the potential reputational harm. I hope that it shows everyone doing their professional best. And, you know, it's, I understand that this type of show has evolved from the stuff I saw as a kid, probably, where it was intended more to shock, and it's probably more realistic now. So, you know, I think I'll just say I'm putting confidence in you to make a good recommendation to us. And with trepidation, I'll say, you know, I can go forward with this. And I hope that, you know, I see that there's a 45-day severability clause, which is kind of a long period of time. So, if we decide we want out, we get a month and a half of continuing to work with the production company. But hopefully, it will show folks being, both being professional and having good interactions with the public that are, you know, increasing public confidence, and people will want to go into law enforcement as a result. You know, I hope that that is the outcome. And it, I'll just state that it makes me a little anxious and, you know, but I also think it's putting people in the role of having to really show their professionalism because they're being observed in a different way. So, you know, maybe it'll be a good thing.
Supervisor Arroyo, I just want to say I share all those same concerns, okay? So, they're totally validated, you and Supervisor Wilson. I totally get it. You know, this is an opportunity to be very transparent and show that our policies and procedures and what we're doing out there does make a difference, and it's going to be out in public view. And so, I'm proud of our deputies and what they do on a daily basis. And I think this is, again, going to show a highlight of our professionalism. And so, if I didn't have total confidence in them, then I, you know, I wouldn't be in a position to promote this access agreement. So, but I totally, I'm tracking with you, and I totally understand.
Hi, Billy. I appreciate you bringing this forward. And in this day and age of grand jury report saying we need oversight, looks like you're going to have a couple oversized cameras instead of body-worn cameras. And it's a good way for us to showcase the men and women of our sheriff's department, who do a great job, who do a great job, sometimes undermanned, understaffed. And we're sitting here worried about the limelight that this is going to cause. But man, I didn't see anybody pushing back when Murder Mountain was, I hear more about that 20 square miles than I hear about anything. And that's not, that is not a good representation of Humboldt. So, I think the idea of showing off our officers and at the same time educating people about what a beautiful location we have, but, you know, something just like every beautiful, they even have a police chief in Palm Springs, I heard, because they have crime in that beautiful place. But we have to, we do have to enforce the laws, and this will just show the ability of our people to do it better than a lot of other people. And I will admit that I hadn't seen this show. I've now seen about partial or full, about 17 episodes, very professional, without any glitches, which I'm sure they're not going to show on the screen. But I tried to find anything where there had been problems or anything. And so, I have full faith that you've negotiated a good agreement. And hopefully, if it does not meet with the criteria that you feel it should meet, we'll use that 45 days and let them, let them leave. And I know one of the complaints was that we're not using local film crews. The reason, I believe, and I'm just guessing, is local film crews haven't worked in an active situation, an active crime situation, where we're going to have seasoned veterans that have done that, know where to stay out of the way, not be in the wrong place, so that the deputies do not have to worry about anybody else at the scene, I would imagine. So, because we've got some great local people. But it is what it is. Thanks. Supervisor Bushnell? No? I'm sorry. Supervisor Wilson, then Madron?
Well, if there is nothing else, I was going to move consent, but, and then speak to my motions.
My both, my emotions.
Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I, given the public comment and the extensive discussion, and the fact that we have a lot of really critical items on the consent agenda, I would like to pull this item. Not that we'll have to go through the discussion again, but I think it's important to have a separate vote for this item, so I would like to pull the item. I'm sorry for the lateness of that request, and I think it's okay to do that, but council may have other.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, it can be pulled. It will be a separate item pulled from consent, so there will be an additional comment period. And those who have already commented won't be allowed to comment again, right? Yeah.
Understood. I just think it's important to separate it out. I don't want to see the consent fail. Not that it would, I'm just not sure, so.
Is there a chair's prerogative on that? Since I've already called for it?
I think, I think if I'm gauging, the motion on the table is to approve the consent calendar with item D-24 pulled for discussion.
Right.
And D-23 as well.
Yep.
And I'll second that motion.
Yeah, that's my motion, so.
Supervisor Bone, may I make one?
Supervisor Arroyo?
If there's a clarification, please go ahead. My item was just a thanks to someone, so. So, Mike, can you clarify your motion?
My, I mean, honestly, I don't, I think we could probably pull through this with the discussion that we've had. And I was willing to, you know, just vote no on consent with the note that all the other things pass. If there's another one, that's fine. We could, oh, do we have any four fifths on the consent right now?
Yeah.
We do? Okay, then that's not going to work, because I don't know what Supervisor Madron's going to do. So, what I then will do is I make a motion to move consent minus item 23 and 24. And I would like to, if we could move item 23 to, maybe to the end of the meeting. I don't know if we really want to, like, rehash it right now again, all over again. Okay, never mind. We'll keep it going in the same order we're doing in, just, that's my motion, remove item 23 and 24. Thank you.
Second to motion.
Pass it.
I.
I thought Michelle's, anyway. Anybody else want to second it? Supervisor Arroyo, you want to second it?
I don't.
Okay.
Don't care. I wanted to also thank Glenn Zeimer. I've appreciated his very direct form of letting us know what his feedback is on the Measure Z committee over the years. And even though it has been tense at times, I appreciate that bluntness and clarity. And I think, you know, when we have advisory committees, we want them to tell us what they really think. And so, I've appreciated that he has so actively served on that committee and done exactly that. So, thank you for those years of service, and I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, and I'm just going to second what Sean said. I appointed, we brought Glenn as an alternate, and then I appointed him when my appointee, John Flyer, left. So, I've been pretty lucky to have two very active, very good points. And I appreciate Dylan Fairman for throwing his hat in and stand up. He's a young man who's very well-respected, and I knew his family, know his family really well. And I'm looking forward to getting some young blood on there and looking at another observation. So, with that, Nicky, could you read one more time what we're doing now?
Yeah, can I get a clarification on the second? Thank you. I just have approved staff recommendations with D-23 and D-24 pulled from consent. Is that correct? Approved consent, not staff recommendations. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my God, I need more coffee. Thank you. Yes, that's what I meant. All right. Roll call. Chair Bone? Supervisor Bushnell? Uh, yeah. Yes, who said? I'm sorry. I'm going to vote yes, but I don't agree with pulling 23, after all that discussion we've had. So, actually, I'm going to vote no. Now, we have a problem with all of our four fifths on the calendar, so none of those will pass. So, maybe then if we could get a modification.
Is this why we pull things at the beginning instead of in the middle?
If we could get a modification to.
This is fine. I'm going to modify my motion to keep 23 on, just so we can get through this process. I'm not going to belabor this any longer. It's fine, and I'll vote for it, just so we can get our four fifths and move forward.
Okay. Just one second.
One protest vote is enough. I just want to say that, that we just have a, we just have a whole media sphere of fear and anxiety around all of these issues and it's creating. We see it not just on our televisions, but on our social media feeds that, and I just feel that participating more in that arena and having our community be part of that even more is just, it's just, it doesn't sit well with me in general. So, that's all I have to say about that. I'm willing to vote for this so we can get moved forward. I apologize for not pulling it off in the proper time. And I modify my motion to just pull item number 24. Thank you. And if secondary is willing to do that, we can move forward.
Well, unfortunately, I believe the process requires us to complete the vote on the motion that was put at the table and seconded. And if that fails, then perhaps we can then do a second motion. But again, I look at council for clarification.
Council, can I pull my motion?
In the middle of the vote?
We haven't voted yet.
I don't, I think that you could pull your motion in that it impacts the entirety of the vote and the ability of the consent agenda to pass.
Right. So, I'll pull my motion. If someone could please make a regular motion, we can move forward.
I'll second the amended motion. Wait, I think you just pulled it. Okay, so we need a new motion. I'll move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of D-24. Thank you for putting it on the screen for me, Nicky.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, and Mike, and I understand where you're coming from 100%. I have enough faith in our sheriff's department, the men and women of our sheriff's department, and the leadership to make great choices. And instead of throwing fear in front of people, I'd like to showcase that we do it better up in Humboldt. Please come visit, come stay, and go to work for us.
Okay, thank you. We'll do a roll call vote. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo? Yes. Supervisor Madron?
Yes, and I look forward to the grand jury responses.
Supervisor Bushnell? Yes. And Chair Bone?
Yep. I'd like to change mine to no, because the whole point of this is so we can get past four fifths. Thank you.
I don't think you can change it to no after you know the vote of the panel.
I don't know why we went through that process.
Let everybody know that Mike is opposed to it, though, in heart and soul. Yeah.
And if I may, just offer one point of clarification on the grand jury responses, that the sheriff is independently elected and thus provides his own responses without board approval on those.
I understand.
All right. We spent more time on them. Well, what do you guys want to do now? Let's talk about items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment?
Actually, Chair Bone, point of order.
Oh, we're going to pull.
Items pulled from consent go first.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're going to go to Blue Lake, right? Yeah, I'm sorry. We're going to go to Blue Lake, right? Supervisor Wilson pulled this, so.
I did, I did pull this. I'm, I'm hoping to make this as simple as possible. So, um, uh, in the simplest terms, uh, there was a contract for services for the sheriff for Blue Lake. Um, that contract, I think, was three years. During some portion or part, a year and a half ago or so, the, the sheriff made a request to the city of Blue Lake to adjust those charges. There had been a, a negotiation. I'll just, that'll be my biggest description of that. But, you know, it was tense, um, and, uh, and, but they worked through it to negotiate the next contract. The sheriff is requesting to go, uh, modif- to modify the existing contract so that, uh, there is a, a retroactive, uh, cost, uh, that goes back to the city. I disagree with that. Um, I, I think that it's a bit of a clawback, and I think that the, uh, I think moving forward, I appreciate everyone, including in the sheriff's office and the, and the city, for negotiating a new contract that I think is going to work very well. And so this is, um, so from my perspective, uh, I pulled this off the agenda because I think, uh, everything should just move forward as is, and, uh, we shouldn't be, um, reaching backwards, uh, and to modify the contract that had, that was already, uh, set in motion. So, that was my, that's my two cents on it. That's why I asked this to be pulled.
All right. Anybody else on the board have anything to say? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. My question is for Supervisor Wilson. So, the item is for a, um, a different contract, correct?
Yeah.
And you're, and you're, are you saying that you don't agree with this and that you would not want the, um, contract modified?
No, I, I believe that the new contract is what I want, is what I want. It's the old contract that I don't want modified, and I believe what's on the agenda is modification of the old contract.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah. The new contract I'm really happy with. I'm really, uh, grateful to all the work that was done, uh, both by the sheriff's department and the city of, uh, Blue Lake to get to that point.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Chair Bone, we have Sheriff Hansel with us here.
That would be great. That was my next question.
Hi, um, thank you for pulling this item. I think there's a lot of, um, uh, a lot of questions that need to be answered here. One of the things is that this is not about the new contract. This has to do with clarifying the language that this board approved back in 2022, although the existing contract. So we have a signed contract which gives us the ability to recalculate our costs every year. Uh, if our costs go up, uh, we have that ability within our signed contract that the board signed, that we signed, and that Blue Lake signed, that gives us that ability to, to charge the real costs of providing professional services to Blue Lake. And, um, where Blue Lake is, is, is pushing back is in the original, um, in the original agenda item, we talked about, uh, that there was a, basically, a rate of $327,000, this cap that was going to be utilized, um, for this contract, and that's not the case. The contract basically says that there's a minimum charge every year, and that every year we have the opportunity to look back and to, um, for that next fiscal year, and, and charge, um, the appropriate amount for those professional, um, law enforcement services. As you know, uh, over the last three years, our costs have gone up dramatically. Liability insurance, the cost for a deputy raises, um, and, and just inflation in general has gone up. And, uh, and so, we provided that number last year to Blue Lake, um, and then through negotiations, we have settled on a figure that we believe, um, i- is agreeable on all sides. And that figure was supposed to be for this fiscal year, 23, 24, our fiscal year. That was the number. Um, and the city of Blue Lake says they don't want to pay for that because, uh, it's, is over that original bout, um, uh, agenda item language, which conflicts with the contract. So, before you today is a clarification, not about the current contract, but clarification regarding the language in our existing contract and our ability, uh, as a county to recalculate these charges. I have, uh, if you, if you have any questions about the methodology, I have Regina in the room there. If you have any questions about the negotiations, uh, I have Captain Quinell in there, as well as we have County Council Natalie Duke that's there that can talk about the, the, uh, contract language and our ability to charge the real costs. So, that's before you today, and that's what I hope that you can clarify. Uh, we, if we do have a new contract, which we currently do not, we have a tentative agreement, but, uh, we do not have a signed contract from Blue Lake, we have to present that new contract to the board, uh, at a future meeting.
All right. Thanks, Sheriff Hansel. Stick around. So, I will, should we probably take it to, um, Natalie? Do you want to give us the legal issues on this? Regina will give us what she has, and then I'll bring up Blue Lake.
Thank you, Chair Bone. So, in the contract, Section 11 specifically is entitled "Recomputation of General Law Enforcement Services," and it says that the cost, the total amount charged for the services shall be recomputed annually. So it actually calls for that to occur. That was a mechanism for trying to capture the actual costs of the law enforcement services. My understanding is that, just for this year, Blue Lake doesn't want to pay the recomputed cost, even though there have been significant negotiations around that. And currently, they aren't complying with the language of the contract.
Okay. Ms. Fuller?
Yes, um, just as a little bit of history. So, I'm the one that wrote that agenda item that had the misinformation in it. I'd basically, when I did that recommendation in that agenda item, I took what the first year's contract rate was and assumed that same rate for the whole contract year, and didn't take into consideration that really I didn't know what the total contract would be, because it allows for an annual calculation. So that was a mistake on my part, and that what we've brought forward with County Council's assistance is to clarify that agenda item, not the contract. The contract that Blue Lake executed, um, Natalie just shared with you what's allowed in that. When we hit year two of the contract, I sent a letter of the new rate, and Blue Lake paid it. And when we hit year three of the contract, I sent a letter with the new rate, which was much higher. Blue Lake paid the first quarter of it, and as allowed in the contract, they wanted to dispute that charge. They said that that was, you know, they wanted to understand it better. So we went through lengthy negotiation, and what I proposed to them, when we proposed it, clearly said that it was to be for this fiscal year, July 1st, 2023, through June 20, um, June 30th, 2023, and next year. So our negotiations, and when we started them out, were to renegotiate this fiscal year, and we were willing to let that, because of the lengthy process and the new methodology, we were willing to propose that whatever we agreed on this year would then be in next year. So from the very beginning, it was about this year and renegotiating that original rate of $315,000 that we sent to them for year three, down to $190,000. And so as of right now, the city of Blue Lake is holding to the second year's rate, not even the original rate, the second year's rate. They've made, um, a second payment based on that rate. So, um, as of right now, we've only received, um, in their mind, Q quarters one, two, and three, based on last year's rate, but we're holding to the new rate, which is based on actual costs from last fiscal year. So, just to try to clarify it. Hopefully that helps.
So, Ms. Duke, does, the input error that was made, just with the carryover, that doesn't null and vo- that doesn't null and void the contract, the wording of the contract, does it?
No, the, the wording of the contract clearly talks about the recomputation.
That's what we follow. Okay. Supervisor Wilson?
I, I thought we were going to hear from, what, Blue Lake? Nope.
Please. Blue Lake's presentation.
Okay, I, I guess I'll start. Uh, my name is Adeline Jones. I'm proud to be the mayor of Blue Lake. And we did have a negotiating team on January 19th, 2024, consisting of myself, uh, councilperson Elizabeth McKay, who's here this, this morning, uh, city manager Mandy Maker, Regina Fuller was there, as well as, um, deputy director Brian Quinell. And at that time, we went line by line over the items that were in the contract for our new contract of fiscal year 24, 25. Um, adjustments were made. It was actually a very fruitful, uh, meeting, and we concurred that we now owe, uh, for the fiscal year 24, 25, our new contract will be for $190,685. There was never any discussion of any retroactive pay or any other, uh, bills needed. We are paid in full as far as the city of Blue Lake is concerned. I will say that I am 110% in favor of our sheriff's department, as well as all police departments. I understand all the work that they do, and I certainly appreciate it. The sheriff was, uh, really instrumental in helping the city of Blue Lake years ago. The first time I was on the city council, and we had a very bad situation with our, uh, Blue Lake Police Department, and the sheriff did help us there. But moving forward, I would like us to, um, get this ratified. My citizens in my town are coming to our meetings concerned about our level of law enforcement, and I would like to see this matter, um, settled and get moving forward on it. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you for pulling this item. Um, I did want to clarify some of the process. My name's Mandy. I'm the city manager for the city of Blue Lake. Um, in May of 2023, we received a letter from the sheriff stating that our contract was going to go from $144,000 up to $315,000. As a small jurisdiction, you can imagine that was a really big cost increase. It was, um, very shocking for the city of Blue Lake, and we immediately reached out to the sheriff to, um, to ask for clarification, um, to ask for, um, a methodology on what that cost increase was based upon, um, and to enter negotiations if necessary. From that point, from May going forward to April, when we finally settled on a new cost and a new methodology, um, there was a lot of talk and a lot of effort and a lot of anxiety, um, and a lot of, uh, community strife associated with the process to get to, um, the, the position that we're at now. Um, the $315,000, uh, cost request was not backed up by any documentation or figures. The city requested, uh, clarification on that to be able to actually out, negotiate and to have a better understanding of what those cost increases, um, were reflective of. Um, we were, did not receive that. Going forward into January, uh, the city met with Regina and with Brian Quinell, and we had an ad hoc committee from the city of Blue Lake. And we were able to really delve into those, uh, cost centers that were being, um, allocated to the city of Blue Lake. It was a really good process. I think it was a great process for everybody to get a better understanding of where those costs come from and how the city plays into, um, this process of, of working with the sheriff under a contract basis for law enforcement services. So we really appreciated that. Um, it was something that, um, took some time. Uh, we found several discrepancies. We found several areas, um, where we could work together, um, and we arrived at a number that I think everyone felt really good about. Um, I do want to thank, uh, Brian and Regina. They did a great job in, um, presenting those numbers to us, um, and working together and being, um, I think respectful of also the position that the city is in as a small jurisdiction. Um, I would like to clarify that we do not have dedicated law enforcement service in Blue Lake. Um, so we have basically a call-for-service contract. The new proposal for $190,000 does not put patrol deputies in Blue Lake. Um, so the costs that we are paying are also going in to provide services for the county at large. Uh, when we look at our call statistics, um, the sheriff had stated that the city of Blue Lake has over 2,000 calls for service a year. When we actually delved into those call numbers, that was about a 60% um, allocation of calls to the county that were not attributed to the city of Blue Lake. So, in that respect, the city of Blue Lake really is a partner. Um, we're paying a hun- we're proposing to pay $190,000 to help support the sheriff's services, to support deputies, which also provide service into the county response area. Um, so, I think at this point, um, the city has called into question the original proposal, the original cost increases. Um, we are just now at a point where we have numbers that we feel can be justified and are understandable, and that's what we're asking the Board of Supervisors to, um, to continue with. We really want to move forward. We're happy to work with the sheriff, but we also need to have, um, you know, some consistency, and I have a fiduciary responsibility to our constituents and to everyone that pays into, you know, taxes that support law enforcement services to make sure that I have an understanding of where those numbers come from. And it's taken us from May of 2023 to April of 2024 to have that understanding. So, I'm asking the supervisors to consider just moving forward with the 24, 25 contract. It's literally $45,000 that's in question, that the sheriff is asking to retroactively apply to our contract. It's $45,000 that the city of Blue Lake doesn't really have. Um, it wasn't something we budgeted for. It wasn't something that we even knew was coming down the pike. And I think at this point, we've probably all expensed more than $45,000 in staff time, review, anxiety and stress in our communities, and it would just be nice to move forward from 24, 25 going forward with a clean new contract, a new cost, um, proposal, methodology that we all have an understanding of.
Okay. Is that it from your team? Is that it from Blue Lake's team?
Unless you have any additional questions.
Supervisor Row?
Well, I'm hearing two very different, uh, perspectives, for sure. Um, I, it's, uh, a little hard for me to understand how there wasn't a knowledge of an increase coming if it's been about a year of, um, I, do you, do you want to speak to that? Yeah, I, I, I'm, yeah, I'm trying to...
Yeah, I need to just clarify a couple of things. So we, we sent out, um, notice in May of 2022 that, um, increased the contract, and Blue Lake paid that. We sent out notice in May of 2023 that we were increasing the contract, which is what Mandy just explained. And within weeks of that notice going out, I went on, um, an unexpected medical leave for several months. So when the city of Blue Lake was seeking, um, detail as to how that $315,000 was calculated, unfortunately, I was unavailable, and I hadn't had an opportunity before I went out to show anybody else my calculations. So it sat, and it wasn't because we didn't want to provide the information. It was because I was the only person that could do that, and I was not there. So finally, when I was able to return back to work, that's when we did engage with the city of Blue Lake, and the whole reason for our negotiations was to resolve this fiscal year, July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2023. I thought we were both very clear, and I am disappointed to hear that we evidently weren't, according to the mayor. But the whole purpose of our meetings was to renegotiate that $315,000, to help the city of Blue Lake understand what that was based off of, and to see what we could do to come to, you know, some sort of resolve that we both could agree to. So, you know, the very detailed presentation that I had put together for them, we went through with, you know, reviewing with our C A O's office and with county council, and we pulled out all of the county's internal service fund overhead charges. So that's what reduced the number. Um, we also added in Measure Z revenue that the sheriff's office was receiving to cover some of our law enforcement services. So that reduced the number. So we, we negotiated from $315,000 as the cost increase down to the 180, or, I'm sorry, $190,000 for this fiscal year. And as part of, because we knew of what a intensive process that was to fix this fiscal year, we proposed that as we entered into a new agreement next fiscal year, that we would use the same methodology, the same rate, and we actually made a lot of improvements to next year's contract, which we have not brought forward to you yet, which really outlines it so that in the event I'm not here, somebody else could duplicate the work. So, um, again, our whole purpose for sitting down, starting in January, was to solve this fiscal year. And, uh, we were very, I thought we were very clear. The, the, uh, proposal says for contract periods, January 1st, 2023, June, through June 30th, 2020, I'm sorry, 22, through June 30th, 2023. and twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-two, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and then going into the next one. So I think I did that wrong. July first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. So this fiscal year. So that was in an email, you know, that I could present if I needed to. It's in the the packet that we gave to the city. So we were trying to resolve this fiscal year, and again, we're proposing the same information for next, for the new agreement.
So that.
I, yeah, I I think I I understand. So a combination of an unexpected leave and some, it sounds like maybe some different perceptions of what was going on, but I'm glad there's, yeah, I I'm glad that you all were able to negotiate it to a rate that was, you know, much closer to the initial rate that the city was paying.
So just for my own, so we were at three fifteen. You guys went through and everything else and brought it down to one ninety.
Correct.
And they have paid one twenty of the one ninety.
To date, they've only paid, I believe, like a hundred and nine thousand of the one ninety, somewhere in there.
So we're looking at an eighty thousand dollar difference and not a forty-five thousand dollars. I just, again, I I understand the 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 extent of what ninety thousand or twenty dollars is to any of our budgets. I fully understand that. And I'm trying to keep a little camaraderie here between, because as it was said, we're providing a service that I was on the board when we did this, that they they hit a pretty good hiccup in the road and that they probably couldn't have pulled themselves out of. And I don't think that they self-inflicted this situation. I don't think we self-inflicted. We were put in a bad situation. I'm glad you got healthy and came back, by the way. But I mean, with all this going on, is there, if we're looking at ninety thousand dollars, and this is just me, she's, can we split it and just call it? And we all take a hit. I mean, I don't think we should take any of it because we're providing a service that, I mean, we've given raises, we've to to keep officers, we're shorthanded. I just, I I don't know. What 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 are your options? Put them in the, because it's not forty-five thousand, it's eighty thousand if I'm, no?
So supervisor.
My math's bad.
Supervisor Bone, they did ask to keep the same rate. We brought that forward to the sheriff. Captain Quinell and I and the sheriff spoke about it, and we truly felt that in a way we'd be gifting public funds if we weren't charging.
That was my.
That's where, that was the position that we took. So, you know, we felt that a hundred and ninety thousand, I mean, we showed in excruciating detail, these are our real costs. And we backed off on all of the county internal service funds. We backed off on fixed assets because they're depreciated through the cost plan. You know, we added in the Measure Z revenue as an offset.
You backed off basically thirty-five percent.
We backed off a lot. And so we felt that we, you know, because we we do understand that they're a small city, but we felt that our job is to present actual costs and that if we were to make a decision to charge them anything less than what the numbers show, that we were gifting public funds, and we weren't willing to do that. So that was the position we took.
I thought the city manager has a, she's waving at me, so.
Sorry. So I just want to clarify, the city is paying against the current contract of one forty-five, or it's about one hundred and forty-four plus.
So you're going to pay the other thirty-six thou- okay.
Absolutely.
It hasn't been paid yet, okay.
Yes, it's a quarterly payment.
I wasn't exactly wrong.
Yeah, so I want to just clarify. So the increase in question is about forty-five thousand, and that's the retroactive application of the negotiated rate that we've just come to at the end of April of two thousand and twenty-four. It's taken us a year to get to this point, where we actually had numbers that we all felt could be justified. The original proposal by the sheriff was for three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and there was no justification behind it, except costs have increased. Through a almost year-long process of going through and working with Regina and looking at all the cost centers, we were able to apply a percentage population rate to those call, those cost centers to get to a hundred and ninety thousand that we all feel very comfortable with, and the city is more than happy to pay that moving forward. The problem is we're at, the sheriff is asking for that cost to be applied back, and that's where the city has a problem. We have said from day one, and I also have the emails to Regina saying, we don't agree to apply this to the twenty-three, twenty-four contract, because it's taken us all the way into this, almost the next fiscal year, to even have an understanding of what those cost proposals are. So we're very happy to move forward with one ninety. We just don't feel that it is appropriate at this time to apply that same increase retroactively. The other problem was that the board of supervisors took action originally, and you set some benchmarks for contract increases. And we brought that to the sheriff's attention months and months and months ago, saying, if you want to increase our contract again, you need to go back to the board of supervisors and address the issue. You put some hard stops on that that increase potential. That's where you're at right now. So the technically, the sheriff can re-computate every year, and that's great, and we should be responsive to that, which we felt we had been. But in order to go beyond what your authority, the authority that you gave the sheriff to under that original action, this would be an increase beyond beyond that authorization. So it has to come back anyways, and now it's being trying to be applied retroactively.
And so I just, I'm going to go to county council on this. No matter what Ms. Fuller said or anything else, we have to follow the guidelines of the contract. Does the contract allow for rec, to be retroactive if it has, if the contract hasn't been met last year with the computations, no matter what? Or is there a drop dead date? You didn't give them to us by then, this is your Blue Light special.
The the contract isn't specific as to that. It does provide for recalculation every year. It sounds like that was occurring and took a long time, but it does contemplate that the fees will be recalculated every year. And there was an error in the agenda item, which we're trying to remedy, but the contract clearly contemplates the negotiation and recalculation of the fees on a yearly basis, which is what occurred.
Okay. So I just push now.
Thank you. So I think Supervisor Bone may have answered my question, but today's item is about just upholding the number eleven, which is the recomputation of general law enforcement services and reassuring that that is what this board did. Am I correct?
That, and also just clarifying that the there was an error in the original agreement that set that maximum amount based on the first year's amount.
Okay.
And that shouldn't have been in there as a maximum amount.
And that was in the agenda, but not in the contract?
Exactly.
Okay. And so when I'm looking at this contract, it was signed by the Blue Lake manager and the mayor, as well as, you know, our our sheriff council. And so I I I'm a little bit confused when, you know, the agenda item was obviously written wrong, and we're correcting that, but in this contract that you all signed, it says that it will be recalculated every year. And so I don't think that it's a renegotiation for the hundred and ninety thousand dollars. He, Sheriff Hansel, sounds like reduced the cost with your ask to come forward, and I don't see anywhere in this contract that says you don't have to pay for the services that were provided last year at his rate.
Yeah, I don't think the city is disputing that. We're we're very happy to have the costs re-computated. The problem was that the, a contract's two-sided. You know, we're a party to the contract as well. So there has to be that process. So the sheriff can can re-computate the cost. He presents that to the city. The city looks at that. We discuss it. We can negotiate that. And so, and that's the process that we undertook. Honestly, we didn't know that there had been a board action, and I think the board action probably was appropriate. I know whenever I've been given authority under contracts, there's always a, you know, kind of a benchmark. You don't get an open-ended necessarily authority to to continue. So I think what the board was doing was saying, we're giving you authority to work with the city of Blue Lake for three years, up to this amount. If you want to go beyond that amount, you need to bring it back because it's, you know, it's starting to get to be a larger amount and maybe a larger process, and maybe that needs to be re-looked at to see if there's maybe a burden on services. I don't know, but it seems reasonable, and it was a reasonable, I think, request to have to come back to the board of supervisors and present that. The city is not disputing the ability to re-computate. What we were disputing at the beginning was receiving a letter for three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars with a basically a pay or quit with nothing behind it.
I I understand that. And as you heard, Ms. Fuller was out on medical leave, and and once she returned and was able to engage with you guys, that happened, and you stated that that happened and that that process was good. And so I believe that for the last year, which you're disputing, you don't want to pay the one ninety, you want to pay one forty something, you were getting the explanation. Am I correct? And I'm just trying to get my mind wrapped around it.
I think too, I think if the city hadn't pushed the issue, and the city hadn't called to question the numbers and the the proposal and the methodology that didn't exist at the time, this would be a whole different situation. We probably wouldn't have law enforcement with the sheriff. We probably would be looking at other options because we couldn't afford the three fifteen.
Well, as you said, that's a negotiation on both sides, and that's what you did, was you negotiated. So I'm just trying to understand so that I can, you know, wrap my head around. I appreciate your explanation.
Yeah, I think the problem is, is at the beginning, there wasn't a negotiation. It was three hundred and fifteen, pay, or, you know, the the contract would be severed. It's taking taken us months and months and months and months to get to a point. At one point, the city even offered to have an inflationary cost proposal from the sheriff just to get us to a point where we could pay some form of an increase for twenty-three, twenty-four that was reasonable. We understand costs have increased. We're not disputing that. We just need a reasonable solution and a reasonable rationale to be able to make that application of cost increases. We asked for that. That was turned down. We still, it took months before that three fifteen was off the table, and we are back at a place that we felt was more reasonable, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Was there ever a time where you weren't receiving sheriff services in Blue Lake?
No, and there wasn't a time that we weren't paying either.
Okay, thank you.
So we've been paying the whole time for those services.
Thanks so much.
Supervisor Bone. Go ahead.
I was going to open to public comment, but please, go ahead.
I was just going to note that the, I just, you know, the the year-over-year increase of from twenty-two to twenty-three was seventeen percent, and then from twenty-three to twenty-four, looks like it was about twenty-three percent. So if that's helpful in the context of this conversation, it's helpful to me to kind of see that, you know, that the percentage increase has has gone up a bit, and, you know, as as we all know, costs have increased. So just part of the thinking as we hear public comment.
Sure. Open to public comment.
Kent Swawski, yes, it's been a very contentious item in Blue Lake, ongoing for a long time. I think the problem you have here is you have one side, being you, very wise with competent counsel, able to tell you what contract law is. On the other side, in in Blue Lake, they had a Mitchell Law Firm representing them. They had a conflict of interest. My understanding is they they said, gave names of two or three other law firms they could go to to get legal advice on this. We have no indication they've done so at all. So when you have individuals without law experience, like myself, I get a lawyer. We're not seeing a lawyer here explaining their side of the deal. A little bit of facts and figures for you. I think it was a hundred and nine thousand or thereabout that's been paid this year. The city of Blue Lake gets from the state a hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. So if they were to go to their general fund, paying twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two to fulfill the obligation as per the contract, it's not a, it's not a budget breaker. I mean, you know, it's 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 always hard for everybody, but you, I feel you have a fiduciary duty, as they said, to make sure that you get your costs recovered. That's what's, I think, your obligation to do, and everybody has their duty. Strongly support you moving forward with what the sheriff has has computated. A lot of effort went into this. I think due diligence was done on all sides, and it's a little bit disconcerting to me to see people come in not being truthful, that they do have that hundred and sixty-two thousand and that small amount they'd have to make up. So hopefully, you will go ahead and and not split the baby on this one. I think the baby's already been split, went down from three whatever down to one ninety, and I think they should basically pay their share. A majority of the people in Blue Lake definitely support the sheriff out there. It was kind of inferred or implied, maybe implied, implied, but it was inferred that we don't get any kind of, the sheriff drives through there all the time. I mean, part of their service is to go through, and we see them on an ongoing basis, doing calls within the area. So I I think for for a hundred and ninety, for that time period, we've received the services, and I think the city of Blue Lake has the obligation to pay for the services they receive. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Hi.
Hello. My name is Elise Graffati. I'm a citizen of Blue Lake. I'm also an elected council member in Blue Lake, but right now, I'm speaking for myself. I'm not representing the council. I sent all of you a letter a couple of days ago with some figures that I found rather enlightening. I did a little research back in the fall when we were discussing this topic, and I learned when comparing comparable municipalities in Humboldt County that we're paying less than half the rate per capita that other cities who feel their own law enforcement departments are paying. And so we're paying right now a hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents per capita to the sheriff's department. That's at the hundred and ninety thousand dollar rate, and the the next lowest is Rio Dell at three hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And so it's true that we don't have the level of service that a police department, a dedicated police department can provide, but we're also paying a tremendous amount less than that. So in looking at our budget for last year, we had a projected budget surplus of ninety-six thousand dollars, and we've ended the year with over ninety-five thousand dollars in surplus. We were granted a hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars from the supplemental law enforcement services grant towards our law enforcement costs. And with that figure, that leaves twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars coming out of our general fund, and that amount of money represents two point three percent of our general fund. So my, I I followed this process all the way through. I've spoken with the sheriff. I've spoken with Regina. I've spoken with Brian Quinell. I've been copied on notices and emails along the way, and I feel that when we did finally get to the table in January, and Regina was able to help with the process, I feel like Blue Lake was granted absolutely everything we asked for. And the report we got back was that the process was great, it was cooperative, it was productive, and we're looking good. And here's the number that we have. What I can't understand is why we're not willing to pay for the service for the current fiscal year. I feel that the city has the money, that the city was aware of the process from the the stipulated date back in May. The city had the ability to go forward. The sheriff invited the city to talks over and over and over again, and those talks didn't happen until January. And so I feel that the the city is just simply in a position where we need to say, hey, we got everything we we needed out of these talks, and it's just time to write the check and move forward, and we can all put this behind us and preserve the working relationship that we have with the sheriff's department. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more public comment, I'll bring it back. Mandy, if somebody was to make a motion that you just paid a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars this year and then figure it out, I mean, then we renegotiate to the hundred, so, because even though they didn't bill you, I think you knew that you owed more money, but besides the point. So you got, you got the cops grant for a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
And that's, I would imagine, just when I heard about this last week, that that's to be paid to cops.
It is. It's for community public safety, so we can use it for animal control, different applications. And we don't always get that every year. Some years it's less, and some years it's more, so.
Fully understand that. But this, we're talking about this year now, not, because we don't want to talk about the past.
Thanks.
So if we could go for a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and I'll let the sheriff be mad at me, or whatever the case may be, and it's not splitting, it's just getting what you got for cops, because it's a cop grant, and then we go forward. Regina, there were, there were, there were errors made, not specific errors. They were just, the problem is, when we do this stuff, we're having humans do it, and there are going to be errors. But we use common sense and realize, we know the price is going to go up because the price went up last year, and we, jeez, we just gave the sheriff's a big raise, you know. So if we did it at a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, would that kind of put this for right now, and then Ms. Fuller, and you guys can sit down, we'll be up to the hundred and ninety, you agree to the hundred and ninety thousand next year?
Absolutely. Yeah, we've actually already taken action. Yes, we've already actually taken action on that.
I don't, I don't like. Ms. Fuller and you guys can sit down, we'll be up to the 190, you agree to the 190,000 next year?
Absolutely. Yeah, we've actually taken action. Yes, we've already actually taken action on that.
I don't, I don't like this because I think, I think it's owed. I really think it's owed. But I don't know how much time we're going to spend on this and I don't know what we're going to come up with on a vote. So I just, I, that's my idea. I mean, that's, I can't.
And I can't, I can't speak on behalf of the council, but I think that's something that could be looked on favorably. Like I said at the beginning, we did propose even applying an inflationary cost number just so we could get, we know costs have gone up and we're respectful of that. And so if there was a, a reasonable application of a cost, I think the, the city would be, would be appropriately responsive to that. I, like, we have a, a council meeting tonight, we can, you know, take this back as, as an option, but I think that would be something that seems fair and.
I think at this point, I don't know, but your option, I think it's our option.
Well, like I said, it's a contract, so the city has to agree to it as well. So, you know, an amendment, you know, amendments have to be agreed to by both parties, so. But I think that that would be a reasonable and equitable solution to the issue and I think we could then move on. You know, in 24, 25, we're ready to sign the contract, I've already been authorized to sign it, it's already put into our budget that we're proposing tonight for adoption. So I honestly would just love to move forward with this and if that could, if that could happen with, in that framework, I think.
I'm only 20% and it's my idea. I don't like the idea, but we can, we can fight over this as long as we want. But, I mean, that's just my thoughts, my 20%. I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Royal.
I have a clarifying question. Was 196,85 intended to go for the next fiscal year or is this simply the increase for the past fiscal year? It's both? Okay. That's helpful to understand. Well, to be honest, I think we've already brought the cost down substantially. We do direct every department to pass on some of these internal costs, although it's frustrating and they're expensive and those costs have gone up, the cost of the county has been significant as well. So, you know, I appreciate that we brought it down to the 190. I'd love to move on, so if it involves some compromise to get there, then okay. I, I would have initially said, this is, this is already a lot of renegotiation and it seems reasonable. So I'm, you know, kind of wanting to be able to move forward, but I don't think keeping it at the 146 is reasonable.
Supervisor Wilson, then Bushnell.
I still think the retroactive nature of this is really not fair, frankly, but Supervisor Bone, can, can we just, the brass tacks of the, of what you proposed in terms of.
Those were my feelings, I didn't propose it.
Well, you, you, you put something on the table in terms of, because I would like to move on, as they say. And what, what impact does it have on the 45,000 differential that's on the table right now?
40% of it.
Is that, is that what you?
Approximate.
Is that what you feel like that is about?
It's 17 off the 45, but it's 28 off the other, so it's going to be.
Does, I guess I want to clarify what, how that would be, how, can you clarify how you would make that motion?
I, if you want, it's going to take it up to 167, 168, I'm just guessing, 167, 68, and make it, and split it right down the middle between the 45 and the, the 190 or something like that. So I'm just, if you're looking for that.
Yeah, I'm looking for the language to, so that we can move on from this. That it seems like I got a nod from the city and it seems.
I'd feel, I'd feel better that we, that we negotiate the 45, 50%. I think the idea that we've, and Regina's going to, Ms. Fuller, but I do agree, we've been asking our departments to cut, 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 now we're, you know, so.
I, I just want to clarify Supervisor Wilson, that it's not that we're trying to be retroactive.
Yep.
The contract states, and this is what we followed, that we are to recompute the annually on or before June 1st.
Yep.
So we did that. We told them it was 315,000 dollars.
Yep.
They, which is very understandable, that was a concerning number to them, so we renegotiated that number down to 190. So we went retroactive from 315 to 190. So, you know, it's not that all of a sudden we're trying to raise a rate that they did not know was going to be raised. You know, we, out of good faith, negotiated a reduced rate when they were noticed a higher rate.
I hear you.
And unfortunately, the way this contract previously was written, there's no time, one month is not enough time, you know, for, for a rate to be negotiated. So when they were noticed in between July 1st, that wasn't enough time for us to settle on a number. The new contract, we learned from this, so the new contract is that we'll be proposing much earlier so that there is adequate time, so that there isn't a retroactive nature. But I just, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah.
That we aren't trying to go retroactive back to some, you know, not noticing them.
I, I hear you, but my.
Reducing it.
But my response to that is that there's not, there's not, this, there's nothing that says that negotiations take three years, right? Or 10 years. And so part of, you know, part of that is that it did take far too long and part, and from my perspective, part of the reason it took too long is because the number that start, that we started, that started this was, was probably inaccurate. Or there was some issues with it, I'll just put it that way. There was definitely, and, and caused a lot of back and forth and angst around all that stuff. And so I feel like if there had been a, a process, like you said, that was, started earlier and with numbers that were more transparent, then we wouldn't be going through all this today. That's, we, it's an iterative process, we're learning. It's like you said, it's just like, you know, we, we all, every one of us has gone through contracts both through this board and privately and other, that we've been like, I wish we could do something better and we could kind of iterate to get to that place. And I feel like we've done that. I just feel like that, that, that Blue Lake paid a cost for this and so I don't want to belabor it much more. I feel like that, that, that the proposal that Supervisor Bone has put on the table sounds reasonable to move forward, to me, anyway. And I think that you guys in the future are going to do much better at this, not just you, but the cities also and everyone that you have contracts with and us as well, when we receive those and run those by, through us and our staff reports. So I think that that's reasonable and I'm, I'm happy to make that motion if I can get the language correct. So that would be where I'm, where I'm at.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Natalie, do we need to propose a number or is it something?
Oh, okay.
I would really like it if the sheriff could weigh in on that, because I don't think this was even what was contemplated today, so if, if you could.
And I'm looking at the agenda item and it's to, to uphold the contract number 11 and so I'm wondering if we even as a board need to make that motion or if that's something the sheriff can work out with the city. And so if I could have the sheriff come on.
Yes, I appreciate the dialogue, but this is not negotiations here today. What we're doing here is we're interpreting the language that's in the contract, interpreting what was on the agenda item back three years ago. And negotiations happens behind the scenes between the city and myself and then we present that to the board. I, I do appreciate the fact that it was brought out again that the city of Blue Lake does get paid by the federal government 162,000 dollars a year to provide law enforcement services. That's the COPS grant. And, and so they, they do have that ability to, to pay that amount as stated there today. And if we want to talk offline regarding that, we can do that. But I really would like the, the board to approve what's in this agenda item and that is to interpret the language, how the contract should be interpreted as Natalie Duke has explained, and our ability to recomputate every year. And that, and, and that's within our ability to do so. And that the original error of capping this at 327 was an error and that the city should look at the contract to get, that specific language is our ability to, to raise this rate every year, which we've done over the last several years.
Thank you. So that answers my question that we don't need to negotiate, I don't feel, on this dais. And so I would make a motion that the, for staff recommendations for this item and that I feel confident the sheriff will speak with Blue Lake. Sheriff, can you come back on? I just want to confirm that you are going to have a discussion about the amount with Blue Lake.
Absolutely, we can definitely do that. I know they have a city council meeting tonight, so we will make sure that we have a discussion with them when we go offline here today.
Okay. So, so my motion would be for staff recommendations.
I'll second.
And can I clarify then, that read, that negotiation directly with the city will include what you've heard here today from the board supervisors? Sheriff Hansel?
Absolutely. I appreciate the dialogue and I appreciate what everyone's bringing to the table here today. And so we will definitely take all that into consideration.
All right, thank you.
Nikki, it's been moved and seconded.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Supervisor Wilson?
No.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor, sorry, Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Chair Bone?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 4 to 1.
And what, what's that? Can I do the public comment on non-agenda items first, please? Okay, we're going to have public comment on non-agenda items and then we're going to take an approximate five-minute break.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, county clerk, county council, ladies and gentlemen of Humboldt County. My name is Vernon Price, I am speaking this morning on a flyer that the county has produced. It said, "Ride the bus for free as a part of your employee benefit package, the county is proud to provide you with a free bus pass to ride Humboldt Transit Authority as you use to commute to work or any other time. If there was any questions, please contact risk management." I, myself, as a volunteer of Health and Human Services, contacted the risk management and said that they had told me that the volunteers, which are three volunteers for Health and Human Services, aren't eligible for that benefit. My question is, since we only have three volunteers with Health and Human Services, would it be okay to include the volunteers in that benefit? I know that you can't respond due to the Brown Act, but please keep this in consideration. Thank you so much. Vernon was explaining that to me out there, it's something I would request to be agendized on the next meeting or something, at least for consideration from staff, maybe. I think it's appropriate, small little things for the people who are donating their time, you know, what you can do. I don't think there's much cost there in those bus passes and it's been a policy of yours to give your employees and encourage them to use the buses rather than having the higher carbon imprint. I'm really sad to be here today. I will be having an ongoing communication with you folks rather, regarding a massive failure with our, our CWS system. The policies and protocols have enabled a very sad thing to happen where, where a mother, due to the negligence of CWF staff, had her children taken away from her and, and given to the abuser. I'm fighting on this one very strong. So we had a, I believe, a 23-year-old person just come on staff apparently and yet she's able to make a decision, erroneous decision without proof, that ends up with a mother losing her children to a molester. The system's broken. This has been brought to my attention on multiple times before, so it's a systemic problem by other people, but I, I happen to be close to this position, so this particular situation. So I'm following it through. This could be a very costly thing for the, for the county. The report had accusations, the report did not even include any comments from the mother to CWS, even though she made a report. The report, basically, the assumption, I was reading through it, I go, this is really, really, really good. Got to the end and the opposite came out after I read through it. The main part of the report that was all negative was based upon a, a person who is, oh, has major problems, drug problems her whole life, she's, in my opinion, a pathological liar. And so your staff has to be able to understand when they're dealing with somebody and not wait all this on there. So unfortunately, we're in that position. Top-quality legal staff is being involved at this time. Of course, it goes through the system before it comes to you. I've been trying to work with Connie Beck on this particular topic and have really not gotten any real response on this. She does respond to me, she said, "We're following protocols, but the protocols are broken." It's the management's job to have protocols, to see they're followed, and when they are broken like this, to instantly rectify the problem and come up with new protocols that solve it. So I'm very distressed regarding what's happened with the HHS and I will be ongoing communication with you every single meeting until we fix this problem county-wide.
Thank you. Veterans Hall Project.
Hi, Sean.
Hi.
Got my blankie here.
Is there some coal, can you feel it glowing?
All right, I think, is Sean you presenting this?
Yes.
All right, let's rock and roll.
All right, thank you, good morning, Chair Bone, members of the board, Sean Bean for Public Works Facilities. So this is a project update for the John Haynes Memorial Building, also known as the Garberville Veterans Hall. I have a brief presentation, so I'll jump into that unless there's any questions or comments off the top. All right, so this is an outline of the presentation. I'm going to start with a little recap of the program, so those are the, the different elements that are part of the design. Then I'm going to highlight the major design priorities that we established through working with the veterans and the design team. And then I'm going to take you through a number of slides that show both the original design and the revised design. And I think as you probably all know, we revised the design because at the first cost estimate was determined that we were significantly over budget. Wasn't a surprise that we needed additional funding, but the magnitude of the additional funding was a little bit of a surprise. So what we immediately did is jumped into a redesign effort to try to bring the cost down while preserving the quality of the project. So I'm going to highlight the, the sort of differences between the original and the revised versions in those items three through five and then I'll wrap it up with the options to proceed, which are right out of the agenda item. So with that said, we'll jump in. So this is the program that the board approved in 2021. It's roughly 3,600 square feet. We have five really major program elements. There's assembly hall for roughly 150 people, an office space for use by the veterans, a small meeting room that could also be used for small events and small meetings for maybe eight to 12 people or so, a kitchen to support this facility, which at this size really needs to be kind of at least a light commercial kitchen, and then restrooms to support the overall facility as well. And then working with the veterans groups and the community and the design team, there's really four major priorities that we established. So number one of those is provide usable outdoor space to enhance the user experience and improve the value of the facility as a venue for events. So we really felt that that was something that was missing from the original facility and, you know, Garberville's got a, a great climate for this and even though it's a small site, the revised program is going to allow us to carve out space in the exterior and really make it useful and hopefully generate some revenue as an event center. Number two there is locate the building in a way to create an inviting community landmark while also keeping the outdoor space and utility areas serviceable and secure. So the original building had the front door on the west side of the property, which really is less than ideal for a number of reasons. So we sort of changed the entry point of the facility and created this perimeter which shields the corridor, the courtyard from effectively most of public view. The number three, create interior spaces with natural light. This is another thing that the original hall was lacking in, so I felt in particular that an assembly space of this size, this importance of the community. of this size, this importance of the community, it should have natural light, so we really wanted to bring that into the design. And then finally here, preserve a direct connection between the Assembly Hall and the kitchen, and locate the veterans' office in a way to best manage building events and ingress egress. So these are just kind of logistical, operational feedback that we got from the vets based on their experience running the previous facility. So this is the original design. Might be a little bit hard to see, and I can't laser point here, so you'll have to just follow along to the best of your ability. But the entry there is on the bottom of the screen. That is on the Conger Street frontage. You can see there's a generous lobby space. Oh, thank you. There's the office, which is immediately adjacent to the entry, which I talked about. That's dedicated to the veterans. You have the main Assembly Hall, which is just above that, 450 people. In this original version, you can see there's actually a folding partition wall that we had included in that assembly space to be able to create two separate meeting rooms, which could have definitely helped with flexibility, additional events, et cetera, et cetera. Then to the north of that, you've got the commercial kitchen. That space is in blue. There's a small utility yard immediately serving that, which has the generator, grease trap, all the utility points of connection occur there. And then also adjacent to the Assembly Hall, there's a dedicated storage room. That's right next to the office as well, and it's a very generously-sized storage room. And then on the right side of the, the page, the east wing, if you will, there's the meeting room and restrooms and janitor closet. And then, of course, you can see in the sort of top-right northeast corner of this plan, there's the courtyard. That's roughly 52 by 40 feet clear. We have a couple of salvaged elements which were included in this. There's a flagpole at the southwest corner, on the public sidewalk. That is salvaged from the original project. And then there's planned to be a trellis in the courtyard on the northeast side, and that is made from salvaged timbers from the original structure as well. So that's the floor plan of the original design. These are some exterior elevations. You can see this is a pretty contemporary-designed building. It's got some craftsman hints. Heavy timber roof framing was kind of one of the primary goals that we wanted to, to hit, which really helps accentuate all that natural light that we were bringing in. So you can see there's clear story windows on both sides of the Assembly Hall and above the main lobby, as well as above the veterans' meeting room as well. There's a perspective of the building, and, you know, we were really happy with this. Thought it was really handsome structure. Thought it was really gonna make a, a major impact there in Garberville. And at this point is when we got the, the first conceptual cost estimate in, and we knew that we had some issues there, just a major shortfall. So we immediately set to work with the design team on ways that we could modify the design, costs, reduce the costs significantly, but, but not impact the quality substantially. So these next three slides are gonna be that revised design. So one of the things that happened, kind of at the same time that we got that cost estimate, is we understood from working with the ADA team's coordinator and consultant that we could move our ADA parking off-site onto the street, which allows for a much more efficient floor plan and footprint. And so you can see that that east wing sort of shifted to the south. The same basic configuration here. Most of the major program spaces have shrunk by 10 to 15 percent. A couple of them have actually increased, though. So that would be the meeting room and the little mechanical yard, as well as the restrooms increased slightly. But overall, this floor plan is about 7 percent smaller than the previous floor plan. And then, as I take you to the elevations, you'll see the, really the primary difference and one of the biggest cost-saving techniques that we used here is a great simplification of the roof structure, elimination of the heavy timber framing that was gonna be holding up the roof structure. The overall building is about, actually, six to six and a half feet lower than the previous building, so there's just less material overall. And we've chosen much more economical materials as well. And there's significantly less windows and natural light, but there still is natural light in both the Assembly Hall as well as the main lobby. So we tried to preserve that as much as we could. And then there's a perspective as well. I want to say too that, you know, the colors and materials for these, these are still conceptual. These are not finalized. We can work through that as we move through the project, but that was the revised design perspective. And then, so here's a quick comparison of the original and revised. So you can see in square footage, about 220 square feet less overall. Much more sculpted roof forms on the original design, a much more simplified roof on the revised. Heavy timber framing versus glue-lam or TGI framing at the roof. Taller structure versus the lower structure. One of the things that I, I didn't talk about, which really wasn't very clearly shown on the plan, the original plan, was that there was an outdoor bar that is planned for that version that we included in the cost estimate, but did not really show in much detail on the plan. That was also removed in the revised version to bring the costs down a little bit. And we've also removed the movable partition and a little bit changed to the building materials. So drilling down, you can see the additional funding that we're looking for today. For the original design, it's 3.57 million. For the revised design, it's 2.8 roughly. I did mention this in the agenda item, but the original design, or the original project approval, that budget was from March of 2021, and the California Construction Cost Index since that time to now is over 35 percent. That's based on San Francisco and Los Angeles areas, and I don't think it even really comes close to identifying the true change in cost that we've seen locally here. But at that 35 percent, that's, that's an additional million right there over the original budget. So like I said before, it wasn't a big surprise that there was gonna be additional funding necessary, but it is a lot. I, I fully appreciate that. But we wanted to go through this process of revising the design to, you know, give your board the best opportunity to consider all options, make an informed decision, and help us move this forward. So options to proceed here. Number one, that would be authorized initial funding for 3.57 million for the original design. Number two would be authorization of the roughly 2.8 million for the revised lower-cost design. That's our recommendation. I believe that that shows that we're, you know, take fiscal responsibility, but trying to preserve a really important project in this community. And then finally, you could direct staff to reevaluate the project altogether and seek additional reduction in project costs by removing or combining program elements or other such major modifications. I definitely do not recommend that, but that is gonna conclude my presentation. One thing I did wanna just highlight and say here that, you know, this, this building is gonna be, you know, at least a 50-year building, probably 60 or 80 years realistically. And the amount of funding that we're talking about over the lifespan of a building like this is relatively minor. So please keep, keep that in mind. But that's gonna conclude my presentation.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So I guess I'll ask the CAO. So we would need to, the first amounts of money that was dedicated to this project was from the finance plan, and so for additional monies, we would also be seeking from the finance plan? And can you elaborate on that?
Yes, that, that is correct. The finance plan would be the best funding source. However, we are currently under the 2020 Finance Plan, and that is by and large already committed. We did have funding committed to the SB 863 project, which was the jail expansion project. Your board has decided to relinquish grant funds, and we're not going to be moving that project forward. So that does relieve some capacity, but not all of the funds that had previously been dedicated, because we did repurpose some of those for projects that were needed in the jail, that the sheriff had presented through the budget and was going to be requesting additional funding for those projects. So instead, we shifted those over to the finance plan. We are working on developing a new 2024 Finance Plan, which would expand the capabilities of funding that is available. But I, I guess I just put some words of caution out there that we've got a lot of infrastructure projects on the table for the county. We've procured a number of projects, or excuse me, a number of properties, and are diligently working on kicking off our facility's master plan and starting to get some big things underway. And that is our biggest and most fruitful funding mechanism to move those things forward.
So the original, thank you. So the original 3.1 million, was that out of the 2020 Finance Plan?
Correct, yeah. And approximately 1.6 has been repurposed of that for other jail projects, so that leaves approximately 1.4 still available.
Plus the 3.1 minus the, I think it was 268,000 to demolish that building that we already used?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I, I would, I would really hope for the vets that, number one, is what they want. I know, you know, given our finance dilemmas, that number two is probably something that's more of something in our budget. But I would be really, would love to hear from the, the community and the veterans here to see what their thoughts are. But I do wanna say that, you know, we, eight years, nine years now, without a Veterans Hall down there, and had we, and I'm not passing blame, but had we taken care of the facility we had, which is a problem we have in all of our facilities, we wouldn't be here at this point. They would have their original hall, which is what they wanted. They didn't want a new hall. And now they have nothing. And so I really hope that this board can be supportive. I know that, you know, our budgets are not great, but there is money in the finance plan that we can allocate to this, and already did in 2021, and everything has gone up. And so it wasn't unexpected that we would come back with a, a higher number than what we had first, you know, proposed in, in 21. And it's taken a long time. Here we are, 24, and probably, I'm hopeful if we get a board's approval, that we'll be able to start. Sean, what does that look like?
I mean, that depends on the option, of course. The option one is the most developed, so it has the most schematic design documents supporting it. So that would allow the quickest kind of turnaround. But yeah, we'll have to, the design team basically is just on pause, so we'll have to get back together and put together a schedule and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Sean, can I just ask one question on that? Option one, and I'm just saying, I'm going from your quote, "On October 22nd, we should have this thing built by next year." So what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out here is, option one is ready to go, and so if we went to option two, how much money are we going to spend to bring option two up to the level you're talking about, and it starts bringing the two together? Is that, and the extension of time? Because all this is, and, and every minute we take, 'cause I, when, when we, when we shut this down nine years ago, I was here, and I remember the veterans very specifically saying, "I know it had black mold, but we don't tear down every building with black mold." But we, you know, we tend to go to the extreme. So we danced, and Estelle worked her tail off, and then it kept getting, you know, "We gotta go back for this. We gotta review. We gotta do this. We gotta do that." If we go to, if option one has everything that we're looking for, where, what's it gonna take to option, get option two ready to rock and roll, and how much time?
Yeah, it's a good question. So there's a lot of documents that, you know, I haven't included, so it's a schematic design set of drawings that are fully around option one. So there's engineering that has been done. I don't think it would take a huge amount of time and effort and cost to get option two to that same level. Really, option three would be the biggest hit in terms of time, just kind of start from scratch. So I think it would be a matter of, you know, maybe an, an extra month or two to get option two to, to where option one is. But having said that too, I mean, option one, that didn't include the change to the accessible parking. So there are some things that need to be incorporated into that option as well. But it is, it is the most fully-developed, ready-to-proceed version that we have today.
So by fully-developed, and I know option, that the parking has changed a little bit, but structural changes, design review, all of, everything you could throw at it, all the, all the buzzwords are minimal, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And I mean, and it's just, and, and I don't mean this in any wrong way, whatever, but what they lost more than, if you go back to an October article in 2016 in North Coast Journal, the, the people that congregate besides the, the veterans is a dog training course, you know, it's, it's the civic center of Southern Humboldt. It's, it's basically the civic center. So now we step back, says, "How much is it a Veterans Hall? Is it a civic center?" I know it's a little bit of both. And then we need to look at responsibilities. We're already taking over, you know, some of the, the utilities for these things and everything else, and they're morphing into more so community centers and veterans' hall, run by the veterans. And so I just, we need to make sure these arrangements. So a little bit of this work is, you know, I think what we need to do is allow the veterans to do some of this work, rather than holding a fist, says, "Oh, we have to do that work," and then we don't do it. And I mean, I think there's a real fine line there, because I remember 16 years ago, I think there were six or eight of them that were contractors here, saying, "Let us go at it. Let us have at it." And it says, "No, no, we'll get her taken care of." And now we're sitting here at an empty lot and everything else. So I think they understand the constraints. I think what we have to do is, we have to change the way we do business on these things. And I know we're looking at that, but I think the, I think that's what we have to, especially if we're looking at, we're looking at $7 million here. It's gonna be over $7 million by the time we're done, because construction costs are still going up. So I mean, you know, that, that, that's a lot of money for, for, to come out of our general fund, or it's still coming. You know how many roads we could fix with that? Or, you know, and everybody tells me it's different monies, but, so, I mean, we need to address this stuff, 'cause we, we, these meetings last way too long on things that should have been done. So what's wrong?
So the finance plan, I know we were able to, I mean, this is where we loan ourselves money on our own stuff. We, we are getting a loan that does have an interest rate, right, on our own facilities. So this actually costs more when we pull it from the finance plan to the, to the general public over time. So I'm very conscious of that when I think about, you know, what we can do with the finance plan. And I'll just note that some of the other things we've been talking about on the facilities committee, and, and I know that, you know, this, this goes a long way back, and this is, you know, fulfilling longstanding, like, discussion with the community. So I'm very well aware of all that. And we also are in a position of trying to get county buildings and facilities serviceable for more of our own employees to work in, so that we can stem the flow of funds to extremely expensive leases and lease agreements that we have, that are ultimately costing folks in the community, you know, through the county, a lot of money. And so that's the vision that I will say as part of the facilities team I have, is to get our county facilities that, you know, our, our employees have to work in, office space that we require to fulfill our basic functions of government, into a, a place where we, we own and operate and manage them and can ultimately manage funds in a better way by doing that. And so I, I'm, I guess all of this is a lead-up to a question about how, how much can we use from the finance plan for those other purposes? How much is left?
The, the current finance plan only has about 1.4 million, and Jessica's, she's stepping up here because she's the, the finance expert these days. With the new 2024 Finance Plan, we will have roughly $17 million in additional funding available for whatever purpose we choose to move that forward for.
Yeah, and within, just to add to CAO Hayes', within that 17.2 million, that includes the allocations that your board approved in the adopted budget today, which is an additional 1.6 million to do the jail projects that CAO Hayes referenced, and 1.5 million to do ADA curb ramps. And so that would leave about, sorry, 17.9 million for additional proj- ADA curb ramps. And so that would leave about, sorry, 17.9 million for additional projects. And that's with SB 863 being fully allocated. Without SB 863 being fully allocated, that would be an additional 3 million on that. So 20.9 million.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I realize that sounds like a lot of money. And in the building costs realm that we're in today, I mean, as you can see the escalation of this project, that's, that's very, very tight for the things that we want to do. So, I mean, I'm, I'm just keeping that all in mind. And, you know, not to mention, every single county office you go to has facilities needs in the queue. It's, it's just a lot. It's, it's sobering.
So what's Bushnell?
Thank you for those comments. I appreciate them. However, our county employees do have a place to land, and the veterans have nowhere. They have an empty lot. And it is the responsibility of this county to provide them, you know, a facility, which we talked about, we have taught, been talking about when Supervisor Fennell was here, and then when I came on board, and we allocated and approved to have a new facility built for them and demolish their building, which, again, they said, "Please don't do that, and we'll fix it." And we wouldn't allow that. And so going along with what Supervisor Bone said, sometimes, if we could rethink how we do things, I know government binds your hands, but we get stuck. And now we have, the Garberville Veterans meet at Lauren Pankos' backyard. And if it's raining, he puts up fold-out chairs and tables in his, in his living room, and in his wife's sewing room. And, you know, this, the process for the last year, Sean comes down, and thank you, Sean, you've been really great to work with, with the veterans, but every month, meets with them and, you know, discusses the process. And they've been waiting a long time. And I know the money's very tight, and that we, we're in a terrible crunch. But, so if we kick this can down the road again, it's not gonna be cheaper next year or the year after. And so I'm fearful that they'll never get their facility, and that's not okay. In, in, in my book, it shouldn't be okay in your books. And I hope that we can move forward with something today. And not option C.
Okay. And I'm, you know, I'm sitting here with the Ferndale Vets Hall. I know Mike has Arcata Vets Hall issues. And, I mean, I can't even get windows or a heating system put into Ferndale that we've been fighting for. So I'm just, but I understand, I've been around this situation long enough, started talking about the black mold and issues long before the eight years. We shut it down in March of 2016. This is not the way it should be. And when I said we need to do business different, we need to do business different, the vets need to do business different. If you're using the facility for public use, you need to get, be getting an ROI, return on an investment that is comparable somewhat. You can't be comparable to a $7 million investment, because you're gonna be charging $300 a night for the gal to have her canine class there, or whatever the case may be. But you're gonna have to have monies there to return into the building, so we don't run into this problem again. And I remember years ago, the vets offered to do the roof, because they, they offered to do the roof and were denied. So I'm, I understand, I, this just is something I just, I'm having a tough time with, and it has nothing to do with you guys, has nothing to do with everything else. It just has everything with commerce going down the road and, and, and being able to drive on the roads and make sure that we have our other facilities. I mean, we're sitting in a building that was probably built about the same time as the Veterans Hall right now. So I'm, I'm trying to think who the supervisor was that says, "You have a better chance of getting your building if you put a courtroom in there." It was probably Borellis. But that was years and years ago. So as, as we move forward, I think, we have no option. We have no option, because, you know, unless somebody has a better crystal ball, and I don't believe in crystal balls anyway, but if, if you think prices are gonna go down, they're not gonna go down. They're gonna go down, they're gonna go back up. Labor costs are not gonna go down. The cost of getting there and back is not gonna go down. So I, I don't see a way around this. It is, how much money this is going to take out for one building, I hope people are taking notice that maybe it'll go away, didn't happen. So I, I don't know how we're gonna get around this. And I just, when we're talking, I, I hated the, the last comparison on your slide. We're gonna use really good building materials, or we're gonna use really crappy building materials, if you read through it. We're not. We're, we're gonna use certified building materials, whatever line we take. So I, I need to know what that, more definitive than I, I need to know how close two and three are gonna be together, or one and three, how close to getting the one ready? Because I, I'm about ready to say, which one can we start by the first of July? Probably none of them. We gotta go through a bidding process. But you got some time to, you're not gonna have time to get a roof up, but you have some time to get some work done. And we're gonna have to start on it and get a foundation in, and then maybe we can do some of this work. So, but if you're gonna send it around for government approval to all these agencies, I don't know if we have another two years. So I need a more definitive, or what is the...
Again, option one is our, our best, you know, way to move forward. It's, we're still in schematic design, so there's still design work to be done to get to the construction document phase. We do have to get a permit for this project. We do have to go out to public bid. So there are processes that we have to follow, and, you know, that timeline is gonna be what it is. But option one is our best way to move forward.
Is the building completely down?
Yes.
We didn't, I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It was being torn down last time I went by it. I just don't go off the highway very often. So I'm just, we didn't keep up, keep the electric panel up, so we didn't have to go to a...
It was completed last year. And surprisingly enough, under budget.
I think we, I think we need people, I think we know people at the permit. I think that'll be the least of our worries.
I, I agree with you.
Supervisor Bone, can I, can I ask one more question?
I'm gonna take this, oh, go ahead.
I, I, I know this is a long shot, but have we considered or reached out to College of the Redwoods and their building technology program around this building?
Way over their head.
They build all kinds of buildings. I mean...
Fully aware. They built mine out at the ball fields. But the, the problem is, is that's, this is probably a year and a half project, and you go on the semesters and everything else, and the, yeah, reach out. Good idea.
I've not reached out. I'm not sure what their capabilities are. I'd, I'd be concerned. But I, I don't know the, so that would be completely donated volunteer labor?
It's, yeah, they, they take on a project every, either, I think it's an annual project these days. And they've built some, some very nice projects. I just, you know, it's also a, a learning and collaborative opportunity for people. And they're built, you know, top of the knot, top of the line. Could be something for a portion of the, a, a component of the project, perhaps, a way to, you know, potentially bring down costs. I don't think it needs to, you know, slow down our conversation, but it's worth looking into.
And their project's already lined up for next year. So we'd have to wait. Anyway, Supervisor Wilson?
At our last meeting, or last time we discussed this, actually the time before that as well, probably the time before that, I've been asking about matching funds and programmatic alignments, either with public safety, or with resiliency programs, or even just funding, community funding, matching in any way, shape, or form. I mean, the realignment that we just had for the funds that were in SB 863, that was $20 million that we rejected that was going to be part of that program. Like, so that's what did, you know, was moving that forward. And with the Eureka Vets Hall, those were all external funds for the re, you know, for the retrofit, the earthquake retrofit for that. It's just highly unusual, I find it, for us to take on this kind of pro, this kind of project without external funding at all. It's, it's, it, that's, I have a, I have a, it's just, like I said, I've been saying this over and over, and this is really an issue for me, that this, that there's an expectation that there wouldn't, we wouldn't seek those, again, those, those alignments. And maybe we have and have not been successful in that. But certainly, you know, a community bond issue, issue maybe could be done. I mean, what is the, the other, the other part about this is, like, in terms of infrastructure and where we build this in the community and, and, and where we spend our assets. And the, and we've been spent, we've put several million into the community of Garberville and Redway area with, with the resources in terms of community buildings, not to, to the satisfaction or necessarily to the, you know, to how we would all want it to be. But we have communities, you know, in Oric and Willow Creek and Orleans and other places that, that would all love to have another community space. I guess for me, I have also expressed several times also, it's like, there's this trajectory of vacancies, commercial vacancies in this, in this area. It's, and, and I have a concern that we're, if we're moving forward, building a new structure in, in an area where we're already seeing structures that don't, aren't getting, being used enough to sustain their life or in that community, that that's also a concern. And also in a community that, that did a lot of work to put together a community center, the Mateel Community Center was funded by the community and put together. So there, there is that space. I'm just saying, it's, it's a, there, there is the, there is the, there is the past that has been troubling to get us to this point. There's no doubt about that. And there are legitimate concerns and gripes about that. But I, but this isn't, this doesn't stand alone as a, in terms of our budget and in terms of our responsibility to the entire community. So I'm just having some anguish about that, because I would love this to be here. I mean, I, I went to the original one as a kid, played shows there, went to events. It was an awesome spot. The, the, there's, you know, the turkey dinners for Thanksgiving, all the cool stuff that happened there. That's real and should happen again. Absolutely. There's, there's no doubt about that. Man, and we're just, we're just in this spot where this is like, our budget is, we're hitting a wall in a year and a half. And so I guess my first question for, you know, after all that sort of dialogue or whatever, my question is like, the financing for this, what do we expect sort of the annual financing, general fund financing, we would be expecting for these options?
Making some assumptions that the interest rate would be roughly 5%, which is obviously a gigantic assumption, and that your board would pursue a 30-year amortization on that. The annual payment would be on the low, option two, roughly $340,000 a year, up to roughly $380,000 a year if you went with option one. And then over the life of a 30-year amortized loan, that would virtually double the cost, to Supervisor Arroyo's point, that financing it does significantly increase the cost overall. So it would double it by the time we paid the interest over a 30-year time.
Can you say that number out loud? What is that doubling number? 14 million. So...
Well, for, for option one, it would be, you know, again, making an assumption of a 5% interest rate and a 30-year amortization, for option one would be roughly 11.6 million, for option two, 10.2 million.
Okay. So, so again, it's like, so what we would be committing to is $350,000 a year just for financing, not for operating this facility, not for doing whatever support we might have. This is what, this is kind of getting into what Supervisor Bone is speaking to. This is a, this is a very, this is a very hefty, long-term commit, financial commitment that is, it's not insignificant. $350,000 a year, plus, you know, plus, you know, whatever else to operate it and maintain it. That's, that's a lot. I mean, that's a lot of rent. There's, you know, in terms of like, where your options might be. I mean, new construction is expensive. So I'm saying, that is a, that's a burden that the rest of the county has to carry for that. And not to say that this isn't a very useful and wonderful space to have in a community. I don't doubt that one bit. I've experienced it. I think it's real. I'm just like, I'm pretty concerned about what we're, we're, what we will be committing our future boards to, to that financing of that, of this. And also, again, sort of the trajectory in terms of like, in terms of like, there, there's a need for the youth, in my mind, the, the, the infrastructure within the community has stressors now. And I would venture that we might want to think about where we invest in that community, so that we can really help it in its long-term sustainability in, in, in that way. I mean, this, this is one, this is one option for an investment to do that. But, you know, $350,000 a year or more, there might be some, some other issues we might be wanting to think about too. So those are my thoughts on this. It doesn't stand alone. I, again, I love the, I love the Vets Halls. All of them are awesome. They're amazing. They're, they're treasures in the community. And again, it's, going back to Supervisor Bone's concern about, or, you know, what he's speaking to in terms of like, you know, the volunteerism, that, that, the inability of us in the past to be able to work with vets in order to, with veterans, in order to, to maintain these facilities. It's been a weird relationship. It's been very difficult to deal with. It's difficult at all of the halls that we have. It's, yeah, and some communities have these within their county infrastructures, and some communities do not. I mean, we look at Willow Creek has a veterans facility that is completely privately operated. We don't have any connectivity with that. They operate their own facility without having to think about anything we do. And I think they probably prefer it that way. So those are my thoughts on this. I, I'm torn in a lot of different directions. And as I, and as I said before, I've been very concerned for the whole time about the lack of, of partnership, external partnerships in order to help move this forward. I mean, when we, when we build new hospitals, we get external funding. When we build new facilities for Alzheimer's, or whatever it is in our community, usually we're like, banding together and finding those external funds. And here, we're just like, asking for it to be directly from basically the general fund of Humboldt County. It's a little, it's just a little different. So that's my, those are my thoughts and concerns. And I don't really know where I'm going with that. Thanks.
And those are great points. And I'm, I'm sure Public Works has reached out to Congressman Huffman's office and stuff like that, because I know some of the Veterans Hall and I-5 have got support in, in remodeling and rebuilding. And I'm sure we've probably got rejection letters or not. But I'm sure we've been, I hope we've been reject, reaching out. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair Bone. Well, I can certainly understand the angst of how long this has taken to get something done. And there certainly is a long track record of deferred maintenance not getting done on the roof, the black mold, all these things. I appreciated the comment about CR. I was out in Hoopa a couple of weeks ago, and they annually get the Air Force Service Corps to spend six weeks on buildings and facility construction and maintenance in the Hoopa Valley on their reservation. So there certainly are a lot, you know, speaking about veterans, right, there are a lot of Service Corps programs within all of the arms of our veteran services. And I think we really ought to be looking at that as well. I also support the idea of working with veterans directly as much as we can to do things, because there's a lot of veterans with incredible skills and abilities, contractors, and other things. I think that was shown in the effort of demolition and working with the county to salvage some of the important parts from, from the building. So thank you all for that effort. We are hitting a fiscal cliff. We have spent $15 million in deficit in the last two fiscal years, including the budget we just... including the budget we just approved today. We've got $10 million left in our reserves. And so we are going to have to start laying off staff. That means less road crews, less social service employees and all kinds of things. We're looking at a fiscal cliff. So we can't spend money that we don't have. I don't think anybody would suggest that we should be fiscally irresponsible in terms of how we're managing the county and what kind of commitments we're making. And it was mentioned that a lot of this started with deferred maintenance. Well, that continues. We've got departments that are in buildings where tiles are falling out of the ceiling onto desks, literally as we speak. Um, you know, the whole planning and building department is, you know, in really horrible shape. And there are many other facilities that we have that are in similar shape. So if we put too many eggs in this basket and we start creating the very same thing that created this situation, that's not a solution. That's not, you know, helping out by putting too much money into something that then causes all of our other facilities to fall further in disrepair. That's also going to be fiscally and just morally irresponsible to not be taking care of what we already have. So we've got some really difficult decisions to make here. I also don't want to do what we did with the jail expansion project where the budget doubled, you know, to do it. And then we had to let go of the grant money and shift the money from the finance plan back out of there, which is, you know, partially available for this or other projects. And I really wish that, it seems to me that we're entering this reality where when we're doing the design work, the architectural work and the design work, we really ought to be looking at some form of modular or phased approach to where, well, let's build what we can build. And I know it's not what everything that everybody wants, but there was a K-MAD report just last night, you know, talking about, you know, the lack of space for counselors to come and work with veterans, the high rate and incidence of suicide and other kinds of things. And I think there are a lot of ways to solve some of those problems, as was mentioned with some of the other facilities that have already been built or whatever. But, you know, I mean, we've made some commitment of money towards this. What can we do with that, that funding? What can we build to be moving in the right direction and finalize the design so that it can be added to as the economy turns around, as budgets change and things like that? I don't want to see it disappear. I don't want to see nothing happen, you know? So that's, that's important to me as well. Um, you know, it is, it is also true that, um, you know, we, we have a, you know, a serious dilemma, as I said, with the budget. So what can we do with the money we have? How can we move forward, fulfill our commitments to the veterans in this community and do something that matters and moves us in a good direction? I wish the costs weren't going up. And, you know, when we look at timelines, I mean, I think we'd all love, as was mentioned, to be breaking foundation on July 1st. The reality is that we'll be lucky to have something ready to go out to bid by September or October. If we're really being honest about this, I mean, the designs aren't finished. They have to be finished. Then we have to put together permits. Then we have to put together bid packages and get those bids. And by the time all that happens, most contractors are already committed to projects. So we'd be, we'd be lucky to break ground by October 1st, about the start of the rainy season. So in reality, we really ought to be looking at what can we do with the money we've committed to build in a phased way and plan on breaking ground, you know, May 1st next year? I mean, that's, that's being honest with the reality of timelines, with the steps that are still left to do on this project. So those are some of my initial thoughts. I look forward to hearing from the veterans. I know that nobody's going to be happy with any of this other than the full commitment, but we just don't have the money without deferring maintenance on the rest of our buildings and continuing to cause the same thing that created this problem. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sean, I've got a question and just because I, in 2022, Corning got a $2 million grant from the federal government through their congressman, Doug Lamolfa. And just five weeks ago, they got another $2.2 million grant. Now, they haven't started anything, but they've got $4.2 million in funding from the federal government to remodel their veterans hall. Now Doug Lamolfa is a extremely conservative Republican congressman. We have over here not an extremely Republican congressman, which not to play the politics, but he should have a faster pipeline to the president and the veterans affairs and everything else. With, with the timelines, we're obviously following it, following and everything else. Is there a way we can maybe, and I'm sure we've tried, but is there any way we can, I mean, call up Huffman's office and put this on a fast track? Because I'm hearing everything that's being said, but when we go all the way back to the promises that were made, not in 2000, well, 2012, when we were going to clean the black mold, 2014, it was too bad, 2016, you can't be in there and so on and so forth. I mean, it's, it's a good way to do business. We keep kicking down the can, down the road. We don't have to do anything ever. But I'm just saying, is any of that money, you know, Supervisor Wilson said, matching funds or anything else? But Corning is a population of 10,400 people. So, I mean, it's, it's not obviously, and that's, I'm just guessing, that's probably the, you add on the size of Southern Humboldt when you add everything in there and a little bit more of the people from Troy-Honeydew are coming over the hill, going that way and things like that. I don't know. But I'm just saying, have we made every effort possible? And I, I can guarantee you, I'll, I'll walk with you down there. I'm sure Supervisor Bushnell will walk down there with you. But Corning, Corning has got $4.2 million in four years for remodel that they don't expect to start for another 18 months. And I'm just saying, I mean, and it's just, it's a California county, I mean, it's a California veterans hall in, in, over there in Butte. It seems to me we'd be, and I, this isn't to kick, because there's so much to go. We could move, keep moving forward because they're going to want to know if we're shovel-ready and we are shovel or hammer-ready or backhoe-ready or whatever you want, people-ready. But I, I, I think we would be, as we're sitting here looking at this, I think we would be very naive not to try to get as much funding as possible, but move forward with one of these, these things, but try to get this money that we don't have to make, you know? We can get a lot done with the first part of it and then hopefully we can go from there. Now with that being said, I, I, I know that's a timeline and I know, I mean, it's even worth the fact, maybe we hire somebody to go chase that, but I, I don't think hired guns are right. I think it needs to come from us. And I don't think there's a supervisor up here that won't push that this is a situation that has not been fair to Southern Humboldt. And I'm, as a community, because it ended up being their community hall as much as it is a veterans hall, as we, as we well know. So I'm just saying, is, is this a possibility that we should be chasing and accommodating the veterans in that as we move forward with the, whatever plan we choose? And I, I, I understand the, you know, and I appreciate the College of the Redwoods. I think it's great. They built my snack bar at Ballfields 28 years ago. The Eureka High Building and Trades built my storage shed out there. So they can do. I don't know if they can do a, I don't know how saddled we are when we bring them in. It's really, really tight when you bring them into government jobs because you run into a prevailing wage situation that you, that sometimes is unavoidable. So, because we've run into that when we built the skate park in Eureka. So with that being said, and other things we've tried to do, so with that being said, can we move forward with one of these designs and, and not a Lego block design or anything else? Build the facility that, you know, we can do and then start looking for some of these funds. And, and maybe I'm way out of base. Maybe we've tried 10 times and gotten nowhere. But I've never been asked to talk to them and I don't know Supervisor Fennell or Supervisor Bushnell was ever talked about, talking to. But we have a congressman that should have a pipeline to getting us these funds for our veterans. I'm, that's...
I am ready to accept any and all help towards finding additional funding for this. Um, you know, I've got two project managers for dozens of projects, uh, countywide. We don't have time to, to chase grant funding, you know? We, we are introduced to opportunities like this...
We don't have the money not to, Sean.
I, I, I understand this...
We don't have the money not to. Don't say we don't have the time when we don't have the money to do anything else.
For the limited opportunities that I've looked at, uh, we were either too late or didn't apply, couldn't, couldn't get it. So ears are open, willing to talk with anyone, willing to jump in any meetings and chase after any funding possible. Um, but, you know, to a degree, we also have to keep our nose to the grindstone and try to keep things moving forward.
I will call Butte County after the meeting and find out how they did it. Supervisor Royal and then Bushnell.
Thank you. Uh, okay. So we're looking at a cost for one of these two on the low end of about $5 million and on a high end of 6.6. Um, and to be totally frank, I expect that if we went with option one, that it would be on the high end based on the cost of, you know, the building costs that we're, we're seeing. Um, so I think, you know, we have to go into the discussion, eyes wide open to that. Um, when we think about $6.6 million up, up to that amount, I, I do find myself very much wondering, is, is that, is that the thing, the best use of $6.6 million to serve veterans in Garberville? I, I, I can't answer that question. Um, I, I'm about to ask a question that I'd love to hear people's thoughts on. Um, and I'm a veteran myself and I'm actually still serving. I'm a Coast Guard officer to this day. So I don't, um, you know, want there to be this sense of they don't understand us because they don't know what it's like. Um, I also take very seriously my responsibility during what is an enormous fiscal crunch. And, you know, five, six years ago, I didn't have a vote on this board and I didn't have control over the timing or anything else. So I'm here now and I want to understand whether, you know, I'm just, a quick cursory search of commercial real estate in Garberville reveals that there are a lot of options. Now, the county entering into a different commercial real estate deal is a whole different conversation. Um, but, you know, there's abundant different commercial real estate options in the under $3 million category. And I, I am curious whether there's been any consideration or evaluation of an alternative that could halve the project cost. Um, and so I'd love to hear, um, you know, we, we have to start thinking differently about the way we spend money. We, we don't have a choice. Um, and so that's something I'll put out there. Um, I realize it comes with some legal challenges and ADA challenges and much more analysis. Um, and I, I hear that we don't want to slid on the process. And I really want to know if there's any other alternative before we decide this today. So I'd love to hear from commenters and, and, you know, think about that in the mix.
Supervisor Bushnell.
I lost my train of thought. Um, I do know that, oh. Um, so with Sean, um, there are some options of, um, some donors that have came forward and I'm committed to work on that further and have been, um, seeking other funding to try to lower the costs. Um, I know that because the commitments aren't right there, that we have to put the full portion, portion out and then hopefully the reduction with people donating can be, and those, they were, you know, um, commercial donors, I guess I would say. Um, and so those options have been, um, you know, I sought out quite a few and got Sean in, um, contact with them. And he has commitments, verbal commitments from, from entities that are willing to put money forward, as well as PG&E donated some money for the generator. Um, and as far as the facility and relocating the facility, I think the veterans, you'll hear from the veterans about their site and how they feel about the site where the veterans hall was. And I do understand the, um, we have to think fiscally different. And, you know, unfortunately Natalie, if you'd been on this board before, maybe you could have moved it forward sooner. I doubt it. But we've been trying and they, they need a facility and they want a facility that's on their site, their land. And I'm hoping that we can have a compromise on this board, but I would love to hear from public if we could.
All right. Open up the public comment.
Kent Swoski, I was 300 in the last draft. I didn't have to serve. Um, I have a question for Supervisor Royal. As a coast, have you ever had your friends die in your arms? Have you ever been shot at? These are the people here that deserve our respect. Supervisor Wilson, you've had seven years to go ahead and help with this project and that was considered to be your neighborhood down there. And so now you want to put it off and just go that other direction. These people deserve, it's not a Cadillac building. I mean, back, back seven or eight years ago, I'm, I'm, we are general engineering contractors with a bunch of us out there. I can't do the concrete work. I would probably go down and try. I can't do the framing like I used to. I probably would go down and try. We're willing to work with you. Budget the money. Let us do what we do. Get out of our way and go. Maybe Mr. Huffman can do something. I don't know. Uh, he's not a, he's not Lamolfa. But we deserve to have this. We deserve to have the number one thing on here. And if that, if that has to change for some unforeseen reason, and I can't see any reason, you're not going to get a bunch of public participation in this, then of course we could always change it. I'm not happy with how, how staff has handled this over the term. Uh, maybe they should have taken my advice when I offered to get them a good lawyer seven years ago. And the city would have been on a decree to go ahead and have done this probably five years ago and it'll be done. So 2020 hindsight, I've never seen a group that's disrespected and thrown under the bus in all the time I've been in this thing as far as how they're, how they've been treated. And I hope, I hope you sit and listen to them and you, you can really emphasize how important this is to them. This is where they go remember their, their dead friends. This is where they, they survive this. So I really, I'm very disgusted. Thanks, Matt Tunes.
Good morning. I think it's still morning. Let me see. I'm Dusty Napier. I'm a past state commander and national council member on the Veterans of Horn Wars. I'm not here to speak to what exactly the vets down in Garberville want, but I am here to support them. Veterans deserve a place of belonging when they come home from war, when they come home from just a nice, calm, normal four years of service. We need a place where we can enjoy camaraderie with each other. Nobody understands us better than us. You can't understand what we've been going through as we served. You can't understand what we go through now. We deserve a place where we can continue service because that's what we do when we get out. We continue to serve our communities and veterans halls do become community centers because that's what we're there for, not only to support the veterans that are in our communities, but to serve our communities. We raise money for things in our communities. Um, since 1961, they have provided support down there in Garberville that is incredible to me. It's, I mean, when you're talking about a rural area, um, my sarcastic switch had to go off on a couple of little things here that were said. The people breaking the law are a little bit more important than what's happened to these veterans down in Garberville. Let's, let's fix the jail. I'm, I'm of the mindset of put them out in a tent too, put them in a tent city. Veterans are a burden when they come home because we got to take care of them. Oh my gosh. Um, they lost at home through no fault of their own. They were willing to do the work. Why didn't the county let them do that? We wouldn't be here today. The thing that bothered me the most was the black mold situation. The county court was told to get out of that building. It was a week later before you told the veterans to get out of the building because of the black mold. And then they were made to continue paying insurance on that building. They lost everything they had in that building. It's been over eight years. They've been homeless and it's time for the county to do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Verta Pitts. Um, my father served in the Navy in the 60s, a few years before I was born. Um, I just want to say that this is an opportunity to do something very good. And, um, we're not talking about a convalescent home or some of the other things I've heard thrown out. We're talking about literally a thank you to the people who have put their life on the line for us. And these people deserve a thank you. And this is a really small way to say thank you. I understand the financial impact is large. I understand the financial impact is large, but if it's not spent on this, it's going to be spent on something different. It's, I mean, you know, pick your battles, and this is a worthy endeavor, and I think it is something you all would be very proud to be able to say that you were a part of down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your service to our community and for being here all the time. This is hard work, and I really respect you for it. I'm Bud Rogers, Navy Veteran. The John Hange Memorial Veterans' Hall is gone. It must be replaced immediately for the following reasons. It is a concrete symbol of a community's positive regard for veterans. This alone helps veterans immensely with their own complex feelings of guilt, and in some cases, negative self-image and so forth. Not everybody's like that. Veterans need each other in a way that no one else could possibly understand. Vets need a place of their own to meet. Veterans have an intense drive to help out each other, but also very important to community as a whole. The Veterans' Hall is where we met and began to organize our veterans, our BFW, the American Legion, the Veterans for Peace, the Vietnam Project. Some of us even went to Vietnam. And thank you Freddie Champagne for the brilliant idea for our very first project for peace in the world. Special dinners, Thanksgiving, Christmas dinners, Halloween parties, speakers like Bo Grites, whom Rambo was created to represent, code enforcement presentations, movie nights, bar and pool table, live music plays, dances, private rentals, on and on. Now, all gone. Our Honorable Humboldt County Supervisors cannot let this situation to go on and on and on and remain anonymous. That's my joke. And I got some ideas. Have you ever heard of a digital printer? We could use hemp and make hemp crete. And they, they just, they just poop out a long line of cement, and, and it works. And that may sound crazy, but it'd be cheaper than using our precious redwood. We can't do it, we can't use our precious redwood. And think, think, look into public banking, the state bank, a community bank, you know? We need funding, and the funding is so available, it's just, it's crazy. Look into it. Please look into it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bud.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Doug Battles, been a member of the VFW in Southern Humboldt for about 30 years. Past Commander. And I'm here to say that you guys need to make a decisive effort and decision today on whether or not you're going to support our veterans. Since our Hall's been gone, we've had war almost the entire time, and we have a lot of young veterans coming back. If you look at what's going on with the Hall being gone, there is not a place that these new veterans can go between Leightonville and Fortuna, from Shelter Cove to Trinity County. There is no presence of the veterans there. You know, they have nowhere to go, there is no community left, except for the older guys now, because are you going to go into a meeting at a senior citizen center in order to help your community? I mean, these young guys are not going to come in and do that stuff, and they don't even know what their benefits are a lot of time. You know, you can see how many people showed up here today. Think of how many people don't show up here today. Those are the same veterans that are not going to drive all the way to Eureka to find out what their benefits are. They're going to ignore you, they're going to build their own houses, and you're going to lose in the long run financially, which is what I understand this is all about. You know, option one is the option that Sean and the veterans came up with after a year, right? And now we're being told we should have a smaller Hall, we should have a less beautiful Hall, and we should have one made out of materials that probably will not last half the time of what we have already asked for. You know? Do it now. Don't kick this down the road. You know, I've been working on this project for over five years with three other veterans and the veterans of foreign wars. And you're talking about reaching out. It's been eight years. Why didn't you reach out before? You know, I wrote to Huffman last night in an email. Boom, done. He knows the problem. You know? Did you guys think about doing that? Anyway.
Thank you.
Make a decisive grant for option one.
Thank you.
We want a beautiful building for the community.
So I'm Jeff Hadid, and I am a part of the hinterlands that center around Garberville and Redway. And you guys have hit upon a significant part of what this Veterans' Hall has been to this community. It really is the hub of service. It's not just a war memorial, and it's not just for veterans to gather and chit chat. It is a place where we've recognized what service means.
Yes.
To the human community, to, and if there's anyone around who knows the price of service.
If the grant allows it.
It is you guys right here. I know each of you has given up enormously in order to serve as a supervisor in this county. And the value of this to the veterans, as much as anything, is it is a place to continue and hone service. I know I came back from Vietnam angry. I was a reconnaissance patrol's medic, and I would come in to get resupplied at Bearcat Base Camp of the 9th Infantry Division. And I would get accosted for my improperly laced boots, for my haircut, et cetera, while I'm picking up the malaria pills that I'm distributing to these guys. But in retrospect, I realized that there was milk in a milk machine in the mess hall of the MASH unit that was handing me the pills that I was going to distribute. And that what was put together to get milk from a cow somewhere in Wisconsin or in this very valley into a machine in the middle of Vietnam for every person who ever came in to a base for a respite was invaluable. And it happened because we got together and did it. And without that Hall, we recently had a meeting with, oh, good Lord, trying to remember too many things at once. But we met as the group of borderline fire departments who realized we could not deliver the services that Highway 101 corridor needed.
Thank you.
And we, we should have had that meeting in Garberville.
Thank you. Your words are important, but we're limiting them to three minutes.
Hey, that's okay.
And I wasn't spitting on you, Pierre.
I know. Thank you for allowing us to come, and thank you for your service and the service you do to your country and the community. I fight a lot of times because I don't like the decisions that are made here. And what I hear you telling me is have the high, college build a commercial building, which I find brainless. They're not qualified for that. They can do housing, and they can do small structures, but to build a commercial building where residents from the community come to your building thinking it's safe, and there's an earthquake, and it falls down on them, it's not a good decision at all. I've been a contractor for over 55 years, been in this glorious town for 35. What I've seen, you come in, you wouldn't let the veterans repair their building. It faulted, causing black mold, wouldn't let us try to fix it, although we went through a lot of different ideas how to fix it, but didn't, none of us acceptable. So we lost their building, my building, our building. Then you allocated the money, then you spent the money. Now you're telling me you don't have the money. If I did that, my business, I'd be out, and you guys would be going, "Good, that jerk." You would. If you didn't, if you laugh at our fun, it is not funny. You took the money, you spent it on a jail. I agree, they should have been put in a camp somewhere. We shouldn't have been fixing nothing. You do a crime, you do the time. And, and if you don't remember, there was an argument around here a while back about pledge allegiance. We called, we made our presence known. That is un-American, unpatriotic, and right now, I'm a little upset, I'm sorry, but I'm telling you, this project should go through. And as far as the problem with, they've been coming to me going, "You know, Pierre, the kitchen and the bathrooms are really, really expensive." And I know that. I worked, I told them, "You know what? I'll work to get stuff donated from my manufacturers that I deal with." They'll donate maybe, and I'll, I'll cut my time down, but my people got to be paid. So anyway, thank you for letting us talk and say what we feel. But this is America, and this is Eureka, California, Humboldt County. We're better than that. And I expect to see a good decision, and I hope we'll come to one. And if it's the, the second option, the new option, then that would be it. But it would be built properly, and if people like me want to donate their time, that has to be through you, and you have to allow us to do it. Thank you very much, God bless.
Thanks, Pierre.
You're welcome.
I'm Tom Pitilla, past Commander of the VFW and past Commander of the American Legion, and I'm a 35-year member. I've been a volunteer all this time. That Hall was my home away from home. I looked forward to meeting nights for camaraderie, to be a part of the community and help the community. I'm still serving, and, and being a member of the VFW and the Legion, we serve veterans and the community. And when I lost my Hall eight years ago, it felt like I lost my home. And so please, don't, do not delay like you did before deferred maintenance. We could have had a, still have a Hall, but just do not delay. Continue and pass this, make this Hall happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jim Truitt, and I'm a Marine, ex-Marine, a Vietnam Vet. And I would like to address the idea that we, we provide, if, you know, our, our income to carry on this thing is we rent the Hall out, and we rent the Hall primarily to people who need a resilient wood floor. The matel doesn't have that, no facility has that. You can't dance on concrete and carry on a dance program, not to mention martial arts and the like. We've had many, many, our income, a lot of our income is generated from these martial arts coming in to do their programs. So I just wanted to be clear that this, that we can generate some income to offset and to help the cost of maintaining the building. And I do want to mention one of our members, George Mullins, who, he's, he's turned 99 years old, and he wants to be in the Vets' Hall, in the new Vets' Hall. And so let's, let's make it happen. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Josh Carroll. I'm the Commander of the VFW down there, youngest member. We really need this Hall. I mean, there's no young people that want to join because there's nowhere to go. So, and option one is absolutely what we need, because if you want to change the way that we do business, that's the way we can do, there's more venue to it. So that is my recommendation for all you guys. I know it costs the most, but that's just the way it has to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Port of Supervisors, thank you for your time. Natalie, Mike, Rex, Steve, Michelle. I didn't plan on talking, but these guys inspired me. I'm a past, my name's David Bowerman, I'm a past VFW Quartermaster and the Hall Manager here in Eureka, past. Getting ready, standing outside here, I was thanked for my service. I used to try and just make a Humboldt, "You're welcome." That always felt awkward to me. My answer to that now is it was an honor that I had the opportunity to serve. Of course, my bullet points just showed off. Okay, thank you. I know that you are pulled in several different directions by your constituents. I'd ask that you prioritize those constituents who have demonstrated service themselves. I know that you support our veterans, not just in word. You find it appropriate to put Fort Humboldt in this very chamber depicted. I'm happy to have seen each of 60% of you in our own Vets' Hall here in Eureka. I think that you should make a trip down to Garberville and visit that Vets' Hall. I'll probably get a sock party from my fellow vets for saying so, but if, if bids were out by, by the fourth quarter, I bet they would be okay with option two. But, you know, that's just my thinking. We are taught as veterans to do more with less, make do with what you have. If you have the ability, if you have the resources, and the decision you can make, please don't kick the can down the road. Thank you.
Hi, Dottie Russell from Southern Humboldt. I don't see you often in person, but this is certainly a good cause. I just want to tell you that there is no money that you could ever spend to say thank you to these people that compromised everything, compromised their families, their health, their minds, everything. How could, whatever they're asking for, I think you should just today double it, because, because they deserve it. I mean, I don't know how many of you have had personal experiences, I'm guessing all of you have had personal experiences. So when I had personal experiences. So when I served volunteering for the extreme weather shelter many years ago, there was a man by the name of Hobbit. Hobbit was a chaplain in Vietnam. He was a homeless man sleeping on the floor at the vets' hall. And he was a homeless man, and he had a lot of issues. And one of his issues was that he had been the chaplain and his entire group that he was being the chaplain for had been killed, and he was the only one that survived. And he felt guilty that he was still alive. Nobody offered to help him. I took him home and I gave him a place to live until he died. Why is it up to me to do this? My brother died. He was in Vietnam too. Did he get services? No. He died because I gave him a shelter. Why? He was on quagileine and they said, "Oh, quagileine protecting the weapons didn't qualify him for something." So he died without services? Why? There's a lady that's homeless that I just gave her housing right now. She's not qualified, she gets disability, but she's not qualified for all the services that she's supposed to get because she got injured on the base in California when she was raped by three servicemen. Why isn't she getting services? What is the matter with this? Double the money that they deserve. Get them housing. I'll give you a place to have temporary housing just for a meeting for the next two months. They can come every single day for, for the next two months, and you can all come, and you can invite all the politicians, and it used to be the Episcopal Church in its in Redway, and it's vacant, and it's for sale, and you can use it for two months for free. So do something, please do something. This is inhumane.
Good afternoon, or almost afternoon, Thomas Mulder here. I didn't plan on being here. I was listening on the phone. Luckily, I didn't have a, unfortunately, I didn't have a puke bag. I'm a little sick to my stomach from some of the things I heard along this agenda item. Basically, what I hear is people systematically trying to attack a community. Let's extract all the resources. Let's take all the tax dollars. Let's put it upstairs. I think we spent over half a million dollars on the upstairs floor up there. Maybe it was over a million. I don't remember. Let's do all these other things in the more centrally populated areas, not fix our roads, talk about all these different things, talk about the overregulation and suck away the people that live in the community, and then talk about the housing and the commercial property being dilapidated as an excuse for not investing in the community. It's really unfortunate. My tone is a little high because I'm hurt. It's really painful to hear people speak the way they do about a community. I, I, like for me, and this might be out of line, I heard, might as well crap in a bag and throw it in the crowd. That's, that's what I heard. It's really, really unfortunate. What I hear is let's kick this can down the road a couple more years. Some of these people that are so passionate, hopefully they'll die or not be able to make it in here and keep fighting this fight. It's wrong. Option one, shovel ready, let's go.
All right.
Hello, my name's Bill Long. A lot of you know me. Everybody back here almost knows me. Been running the veterans building here that got all fixed up beautiful, the way it should have. Almost 15 years. And in 15 years, my wife and I, who's been in a wheelchair for three and a half years, was still trying to collect money. So when the building opened up, we didn't have to ask you for nothing. We bought our own tables and chairs. We bought our own refrigeration. We bought everything. The only thing I mainly asked from the county was a room so I could put medical stuff in there, because nobody carries that anymore. Veteran calls me or their family calls me, I'll take it to their house. If it's Garberville, wherever, I will set it up for them. I will go get it when they're done with it and not ask for nothing. What I get is, "Thank you." That's good enough for me. These guys in Garberville, like they said, "That building had mold." Yes, it did. It should have been taken care of then. It didn't. So now we're here. So I'm asking the board to take care of business and put other projects aside and deal with this one. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Anybody online? Supervisor Royal?
I'll just note, my comment about the construction program was a little more complex than may have been construed. So, I mean, you know, they do cabinets, millwork, solar technology. I wasn't suggesting that we hire them as the lead contractor for this project. So perhaps not as brainless as you might suggest.
Supervisor Wilson?
And if I do need to clarify, what I do mean by there are vacant commercial spaces is the question of not that the community is, well, basically strategically, where investments are in terms of sort of the long-term infrastructure of a community in general. We are seeking to invest in this community one way or another. That is, that is for sure. We do want to create a space where veterans feel belonging. That's absolutely 100% what is, what's trying to be done here. We sometimes get attached to a certain parcel, whatever that may be, and the history around that. I think that's real. But that doesn't, that doesn't abdicate us from strategically looking community-wide for what the best investment may be to create a place of belonging. That's just, I, I just don't think that, I, I, I think that it's imperative that we be as strategic as possible to do that. It was just brought up, the Episcopal Church is for sale and vacant. I, I don't know what, what that resource may, may or may not be able to provide in terms of a space, especially temporarily or for some time. But I'm just, as an example, there may be spaces, even now, where it's, where the veterans can meet and have camaraderie that isn't in someone's kitchen or backyard. And I think there's something we can do to, to do that. And maybe there are long-term solutions beyond this. This may be the solution. I, I will have some discussion about that. I still have strong concerns about the lack external funding to assist with this. Has there been, do we, do we derive, do we have some responsibility in that? I think we do, for sure. You know, we maybe should have been more explicit in our direction and maybe even allocated resources to explicitly to, you know, to, to do that, to look for that funding. But really, it was a call to everybody to, to, to do that. An email today isn't, isn't what, what we were talking about. And so we can go back and look at that too, but we're not going backwards. We're going forwards. I mean, that's, that's the goal here. So I know that Supervisor Madrone had spoken about any, a, a concept of maybe building something even modular, modularly within terms, I would, I guess what he's saying, maybe build what you have in version two, but with, you know, a location where the kitchen can be built when there's funding, a location where the, where the meeting room can be built if there's funding. And part of this again is we're, we're, we're seeking a, a place where vets can meet, veterans can meet and, and, and first, first and foremost, have camaraderie and, and get services and be well in their community. That's, that's the one, that's number one. Next, after that is, how do we provide a place that veterans can help grow their community, which they all deserve and want to do? I mean, I think, I think that's, I think it's, it's imperative that that's be part of whatever, whatever I'm hoping that we can have some discussion about that strategy, but the numbers are the numbers and, and our, we're just, we're just hitting some real big financial realities in the moment that are making these decisions very, very difficult, extremely painful. This is probably the most painful, no matter which way we go. Because we do this in whatever format it is, we have services that will be more difficult to provide for other communities in, in our, or other constituencies, not just constituents, but needy and invulnerable populations that, that need our assistance. That's what I have to say.
The modular thing, I, a big part of the vets, when they come together, I mean, is, I know a big part of Fort Unifor and everything else, when they have their, when they have their meetings, they provide a meal too. Because the canteen used to be the one place those guys could go to, where they all sat down, we're all equal, could talk about things over bread. I mean, it's simple, something as simple as a meal, but I know it's a big part of it. And so I, I don't think we can add that later. I don't think they're looking just for a room to get in. We can move a trailer down there if that was the case. And we can make it smaller and make, add more trailers when you need more. I don't think that's what we're looking for. I think we're looking for something that we had planned, almost to the point of promising, started this process in 2016, 17, 2022. We promised them it'd be done next year. I, and it's just, I mean, that's, and, and I understand the finances aren't here. And, and we didn't preface it with, "We're not going to do it if the finances aren't here." And I, I don't know how we do it. Nobody has jumped on the bandwagon of saying, except me, it just, Corning gets 4.2 million in two and a half years. Why can't we get it? Because we have, you know, our congressman can step up for us in our, in our little burg in Garberville and stuff. So I'm, I'm just saying, I don't know if we can do modular. I don't know if we can, I don't think we can do modular. It doesn't, it doesn't accomplish anything. And I guarantee you, if, if we, if we decided to go modular, I think we're going to piss some people off more than if we don't build anything at all. So I, I think it's, I think basically, what we're going to do is we're going to make it a shortcoming. He says, "Well, here, you guys, this is what we can give you now."
And, sorry.
But, no, go ahead.
I just want to say, like, I think one of the reasons why you see what is happening in Corning and didn't happen here is because there was this expectation to move very fast. And you have to move very fast. And so we were, we were not being thoughtful in those spaces and not giving time to find the funding. Because the expectation was, "We don't care. We don't care if there's external funding. We, we want it now and we've got to have it now." And here we are. And so I don't know, I don't, I'm, I'm imagining probably in Corning, they were, I will expect, I would understand that they were like, "Hey, go find funding. Let's see if we can make this happen." And we, this, the conversations here were not that nuanced. And, and so, so it's, it doesn't create a space for that type of work to be done. And we will continue to do that if we keep addressing the issues in this way. And, and that is, I, I expressed those concerns before. I'm going to keep expressing them. Sometimes it does take time to gather the resources to get where you need to go, and that's painful. And so now, yeah, we're, we are where we are. And we didn't give explicit instruction or, or thresholds because there was so much pressure for the now. And the now comes at a cost. And we're seeing that today. And it's concerning to me. I mean, I, that's, aside from all of the pain and suffering that veterans in Southern Humboldt have gone through, through all the things we've talked about through the past, which is all real, there's nothing, there's nothing invalid about it. It's, it's all real, it's all true. But that's what, that's, it's, that's what makes these decisions extremely difficult. So that's just my, thank you for giving me that space.
And I didn't understand what you were, I'm sorry, I missed your point. But I just, with that being said, I, I heard something about now, and I remember now was nine years ago, and, you know, when they closed it down. And so I don't know what version of now we're looking to. Now, we're going to wait for, until we have enough money. And if we wait, and we're not going to have enough money to do this. We're not going to have enough money. We're not going to have enough money to pay for people down the line, pay for repairs down the line. We're not going to be, have monies to do, you know. But the thing is, all I was saying, and I'm going to reiterate now, right now, if we don't have the time and resources to ask for the money now, and we don't have the time and resources to pay for the building now, how are we going to find time to try to do, ask for resources from the federal government later? I'm just saying, all I'm asking is, let's get on the horn, let's all give a call to whichever representative you get along best with at Mr. Huffman's office and say, "We have an extreme situation." Not an earmark, not anything else. "We have an extreme situation." That's what Cottonwood did, or what Overentama did. And they, I said, they just got a second round of funding and they haven't moved a shovel of dirt.
They also have a structure.
So, no, 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 they're remodeling. That's what I'm saying. They're not, no, I fully understand. I, I, I know the situation. But the thing is, is they also have, you know, that we have a situation where we have a, a congressman that should be well-connected enough to find us a little bit of work. And I think that's, and if we throw in that our veterans have done this and want to do this and that, I think we have a better opportunity. I'm just saying, we can't kick it down the can, the can down the road any longer because it's going to raise the prices. It's going to consume, I mean, next time Sean's here, he's going to have, instead of dozens of projects, he'll have hundreds of projects because he's been working on this project so long. So once we start getting projects done, it takes stuff off his plate.
Supervisor Bush now?
Thank you. I want to thank everybody that came and made comments today, and also to Sean and his commitment with the Garberville vets, you know, in the last year, year and a half. I'm going to throw an option or a motion out and see what this board thinks. And I'm gonna, so I'm gonna make a motion to authorize additional funding in the amount of 3572 slash 718, so option one, and see if I can get a second.
Can I say something before?
I'll, I'll second.
No. I'm sorry.
You can't?
No. I've closed public comment. I'm, I'm sorry.
It just took me enough time to get courage to come up here and say something.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you the opportunity, and I have two phone calls that have come in afterwards, and I'm going to go completely secular, but.
Just take a minute. This is for sympathy.
It's working too.
Yeah. You know, my wife and I built a home in Shelter Cove 20 years ago. We planned on building it for probably 10 years. So we saved our money. And we saved our money, and then we got it. We put it away. We didn't send it on anything else. You guys have $1.4 million or $1.3 million set aside this year for this particular project. Why don't you just build what you can with the $1.4 million? And I guarantee you, the people in Southern Humboldt will more than likely say, "They're actually doing this, and they need some more money." We could probably raise a hell of a lot more money. But you guys keep kicking it down the road. You're going to spend that $101.4 million on something else, aren't you? You will. And it pisses me off that you guys do that. You kick it down the road, you kick it down the road. God dang, what's the matter? You're human beings, just like the rest of us. Get the dang thing done. Next year, you'll have more money set aside. Use that money to finish the building off. Simple. But just to let their, just as an empty lot, people get very discouraged, very disappointed in all, all of you people. All of you people. All of you.
Thank you.
Shame on you.
Thank you. Maggie?
Thank you, Chair Bone. I have caller 7108, star six to unmute, and you'll have three
Thanks for taking my call. I was surprised that you had ended. I was surprised that you had ended the public comment and went on when there was more people waiting, a bunch of them probably, and not because of no response. Anyway, I want to say responsibility, the counties and the class put this whole situation going, and we lost, on the first round, we lost our courthouse, which was a big deal for the community, and told, well, take this plan, and now they're coming back and saying, well, we can't really afford that, so let's give you the cheap model, it's not going to really suit your needs, but at least you'll have a roof over here. I feel like the counties have the responsibility to what they said they were going to do when they tore down that building, because it would have been a whole lot cheaper to get rid of the mold and remodel or do whatever. So I feel like the board did this, you need to find ways to come up with the money. Option two is not acceptable. So thanks for taking my call, and I hope in the future that you allow a public comment from the people on Zoom such as myself to speak. Thank you.
I believe we just did that.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Next caller, 3807, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes. 3807, star six. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is Jema Chaplin, Southern Humboldt. I appreciate everyone who has taken time to give you their comments today. I hope you'll take responsibility for what has happened and support our veterans by approving option one. And keep in mind, please, that a tremendous amount of tax money has flowed from Southern Humboldt to the counties. Please definitely keep that in mind. And our veterans always supported the entire community with their halls. Please do right by them and by us. Thank you very much. Goodbye.
It has been moved and seconded. What? Natalie? Yeah, we couldn't have gone on without a second. Natalie?
I would love to see this proceed quickly. I threw out options because I think it's the responsible thing to do, to talk about what options exist. And I will say, every time we have these types of conversations, it's really discouraging. And I want to be able to have frank conversations about what's possible without the, frankly, the tone of this meeting is frustrating and makes it hard to collaborate. However, I note and appreciate the folks who, you know, just came and saw their piece. I, you know, I'm not here to, like, tone police everybody in the community. It's a uniquely difficult situation to be a veteran myself and feel like just the tone that comes from some of the folks in the community is hard to take. So for whatever that's worth, I'd like to work together in the future. I appreciate all of you. I've heard from other veterans that it's also hard to want to participate when there's a lot of anger. So just take that for what it's worth. I'm, you know, glad to move forward with this, and let's keep communicating in a respectful way.
Supervisor Wilson?
I am still unsure about the funding for this, so what, I just want to reiterate, what is our annual cost at this point of this option?
Once it's fully expended, it will be roughly $380,000 a year over a 30-year amortized loan, and again, assuming a 5% interest rate, which is a gigantic assumption, a fully burdened cost of upwards of $12 million.
So without maintenance, as I just heard Supervisor Bone say, over $1,000 a day for this, just for the financing. I just have, I mean, that is really, that's a tough nut for me. I will say, all of those, with all that, I want to emphasize that I actually think the design of this, of what's designed here, aside from all, is actually a cooler and more interesting and more functional building than was there before. I appreciate the building as it was before, but honestly, the outside space that's designed into here and some other things, really, and the lighting is much, is much, much better. I would much prefer that the option two of this, I would also seek that unless we get 30% matching funds by the time, by the time the contract comes across our, across this dais, I'll be voting no. Because we need to find some partners in this, whether it's local community funding, whether it's federal, and again, we're not the federal government, right? Many, many counties do not have or do not run veteran halls. It's actually, I think, an unusual arrangement. Some do, some don't, but it's not ubiquitous and not necessarily expected. And so this is a big hit to our budget. I think it's incumbent, it's like all hands on deck if this is something we really want to have done and do, and notwithstanding the responsibility of the decisions made by this board in the past, and notwithstanding the decisions that we're going to force our boards to make in the future based on this financial, you know, commitment. But I just tell you, unless we get 30% external funding, I don't know if I can, if I feel, I just don't feel comfortable. Like, we need to, we need to find those other places, we cannot be the sole financing authority for this expenditure. I don't think, I just, when, again, there wasn't an exhaustive review of all of our options because of, because of our need and want to be in this one location, which I think I have, I also extend and have that same, have some of those emotional attachments to that. But if this is where Southern Humboldt wants that investment to be, then I guess that's, I mean, they're speaking for everybody, and that is, that's, it's a pretty big burden. We don't have this type of investment anywhere else in our, in those outlying areas to this extent, and I just, I just want to say that that is, that's big. And on top of the investments we've already been making, yeah, that's, this is very burdensome, extremely troubling for me. Thanks.
Supervisor John?
So we didn't spend the money on the jail expansion because we didn't have the money to build it, just to be clear. There was a grant, but it wasn't enough to cover what were the increased costs that ultimately were happening. How much money from our finance plan did we have in that project?
We had just over $3 million in the finance plan for the jail expansion.
Yeah, and we're not doing it right now. And we have empty beds in the jail these days. We haven't always had that situation. I know there's a lot of needs. That project wasn't just to house people, it was actually designed to try and help people step down from being in jail to getting back into a productive life. So it had a lot of very good components to it, but we didn't build it. So that was 3 million, and our allocation that we made to this project was also 3 million, minus the 200 and some, 250, so thousand, what was it, per demolition was about 250 or so, 260, it came in under budget. So we've got, what, two and a half, two and three quarters million left of that original allocation. 3 million was in the finance plan for the jail project, approximately, sorry to ask again.
Yeah, I mean, precisely, it is 3,444,555, but 1.6 of that has already been reallocated for other jail projects, so remaining would be 1,444,455.
So 144, 1 million?
1.4 million.
1.4 million plus the 2.7 million or so in the original allocation. That adds up to 2.7, 1.4, that's 4.1?
Four.
4.4 million. That's still probably two or three million short to do option one. If we really look at the costs that are going to be, when this is probably under construction, which is at least a year out, in terms of construction windows, as I said earlier, we've got a ways to go before we even get the bids out and everything else, and that's, so construction window is really probably 2025, to be realistic. And by then, costs will be higher, they won't be less. So we're looking at 4.4 million, if we take the remaining from the jail allocation that's left, and we take the money we promised and allocated to this project, that's 4.4 million. That's not enough money to build a $7 million project, it's just not. And if we do put all this money to that, we are going to defer maintenance on a lot of our other buildings and structures and be in the same place that caused this initial thing to occur, and that I don't think is wise planning. I'm a fiscal conservative, and I just, I can't see our pathway forward with that. But I want to put this money forward and make something happen. And I, again, believe that with design work, there could be phases to the project, call it modular, call it whatever you want to call it, there could be phases. One suggestion was, build the structure and then do the finishing work once you get the money. That's an option. I mean, it gets the roof on, it gets it dried in, et cetera, et cetera, and it moves towards the whole thing. But we just don't have the money, from my perspective, to actually be able to put $7 million down on this. That's almost double what we really have, 4.4 million. It's a little more than that, but anyway, go ahead, Alicia, before I finish, I want to say something.
The remaining shortfall of the funding would come from the 2024 interim financing that we'll be seeking direction from your board on in the coming months.
Yeah, and a lot of that is designed to try and start doing things with buildings that are falling down, tiles are falling from the ceiling, there's deferred maintenance, employees are at risk, and we're not providing the services we need, we're spending huge amounts of money on leases for things that aren't building assets for our community. I mean, that's, that's not money we have, that's money that we need to be using to be able to do all these other things, and even that is just a drop in the bucket for our needs on facilities planning. So I have a really hard time supporting this motion as it's currently drafted, and it's not that I don't want to do something. I really want to fulfill our commitment and keep the money on the table for what we committed to, which was the 3 million. Add to it the 1.4 million from the jail project, and come back with a design that allows us to do that, whether it's not finishing it right away, but getting it dried in, getting it roofed, getting it completely built, like option one, and then go get the money to finish this thing, and I believe we can do that. Heck, you know, I'm doing some thinning on my property, I'll donate some logs, you know, next year to Mill Wood for, whatever, I mean, it's a small piece, but these things happen with bits and pieces of donations and contributions. We've heard today from people that there would be other people that would seek donations to help finish it, whether that's the refrigeration units, or this or that, or whatever it might be. But for me, I don't want to back away from the commitment we made of the 3 million, and I think we could put the jail contribution there as well. And I think that this community is capable of working to raise the rest of the money to do it. And if that's option one, fine, but I don't think we can, I can't commit the 7 million that it's going to take to do option one, completely finish it and get it done. But I want to move forward, I really want to fulfill our commitment in that way, and I wish that there was a way for us to figure out a proposal to do that. Otherwise, I'll be voting no on the current motion, and it's not that I'm not supportive of doing it, I think you've heard me clearly, I want to make this happen. I will also say that sometimes, I'm not a veteran, my number was 325 in the lottery, the very first lottery, but I've served, you know, this community for 50 years, and even in war for veterans, not everybody's on the front line. I mean, it is the ultimate sacrifice to put your body on the front line to protect our freedoms and our country, I recognize that. But even in the wars, there were all kinds of women and other people in the factories that were doing incredible work to support all of that effort. And I think when we can get to a place where we can respect everybody's service, because we're all involved in serving our community at some level or another, and I'm not trying to diminish those that put their lives on the line, on the front line, and as Dottie said, every one of Hobbit's friends died. I mean, these are huge sacrifices. I spent my whole first 25 years of work here in Humboldt County working for free in the service of this community to restore fisheries and other kinds of things. I think that was important, it was a choice I made. So I just would like for us to get to a place where we can respect everybody's service, you know, not to diminish veterans' service in any way, but sometimes it feels like other people's service isn't somehow considered as important, and I know that's not what you're saying, but it feels that way sometimes. So anyway, I hope we can move forward and get something really important done, can fulfill our commitment and move forward, but I don't think this proposal that's on the table right now is that. So it's just, thank you.
Well, if we're going to be honest with everybody, I was 171, went down to it unless they wouldn't take me because I had asthma. So, go. Supervisor Wilson?
Well, I want to correct maybe what, something we could have or should have done in the past for a project this big, is I would ask the motion maker to consider, and this is a $25,000 allocation specifically for funding the search for funding. I just feel like if we, I hear, what I'm hearing from staff is that they don't have the resources to do this kind of work, and we're not maybe necessarily set up internally to do that, but I just feel like if this, it's a, even though, you know, we're doing our budget today, I get that, but what I'm trying to get to is that we, if we're, if this board is going to vote to move forward with this, it is incumbent that we do everything we can to find those resources, and that requires us to actually probably either have someone from staff do it or pay somebody to do that. But that also doesn't, I'm just going to put it out there, does not relinquish or the communities at the very, at the very most local level to start saying what it is you can put into this. Because this is, and then externally to both regional and then our national funding, you know, networks. I know it's not much, but it's only one project. I know you weren't expecting me to ask for that, and I can see it on your face, but it's, I see where this is going, and I, and it's, and I, and we have to do something. I mean, it just, the way that it's been has just not been working, there's nothing that anyone's brought forward in these, this eight years of looking, and I have said over and over, like, where are our allies, where are our funding, what programmatically can we be looking for? And we're, it's not happening, and we still moving forward, again, because we have to do it as quickly as possible, but we need some, I, some amount of resource, even if it's nominal, I think it's a little more than nominal, something around 20, $25,000 will be helpful to do that. That doesn't, again, what I'm saying to everybody is, like, that doesn't mean I'm not making the phone calls, doesn't the phone calls, doesn't mean we're not doing the, what we need to do. Tell me what you think. Sorry about that long-winded version of that.
Yeah, no, staff, staff hears emails are already circulating around with some ideas of what funding sources there could be. CDBG funds are a potential opportunity. To your point, you know, securing some funding to work with Ferguson Group through CSAC could be a good avenue. They, they are well entrenched in these sorts of projects and, and very knowledgeable on what funding opportunities there might be and can come up with some very creative solutions. And furthermore, in, you know, the coming years, we can also mark this as a federal earmark to push forward to our legislators as well.
And understanding that, I mean, once something's built, it's really hard to retro, we used this term before, but it's really hard to like get funding to help pay down your finances on this. So it's really important to do it before. And I'm just saying, if, if it means getting the funding for this building half from the external revenue streams and it means delaying it some, I'm going to be thinking about that. Just putting it out there, be real realistic. I mean, if that's what it means, then I think it's not unreasonable to consider that in our timing of, of these things, because it's, it's really important. As Supervisor Madron says, this has, this can have exponential impacts to our facilities. Trust me, there's staff and programs that are hearing what we're saying today and thinking about their needs in their, in their buildings in order to provide services for planning, DHHS, all of the things, all the service. We're, we're nothing but a service oriented organization. That's all that we're doing. And that's all we're paying people to do and roads and everything else. And so in, in all their facilities that they're going to need. So they feel nervous about this. Nonetheless, everyone wants this. So there's, anyway, so if we could, if, if it's okay with the motion maker, if there's some allocation of resource to do this work, that would be very helpful.
And where would that money come from? The general fund? So could we, we had money in Measure J set aside, which went back to general fund, correct? And we talked about grant writers and that stuff at that time. So, I mean, I'll amend the motion, but I don't want to, I don't want to postpone the facility.
I, I could take a crack at.
No, I mean, I, I can do the motion. I just am saying that, I mean, I'm willing to, to make the phone calls. Rex is, I think, going to call people. I'm willing to call Huffman's office. I know that we have some of the bigger lumber companies that have already said that they're going to donate and are waiting till we start, you know, we get something so that they can decide what they're going to do. I'm willing to reach out to more of the lumber companies.
It's almost lumber company lately.
Company, but I don't want to postpone the project.
And I think, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm just going to say, I mean, hire the grant writer that got $425 million for the wind project. I mean, I, I don't know. We got, we, we have, we have funding coming. We got, if you go back over the monies we've got over the last 36 months from, from Congressman Huffman, I mean, it's, you know, Dream Quest, which is great up in Willacreek. I mean, we got $5.2 million for a bridge over the Mad River, for a walking bridge. It's, anyway, I mean, we've got money from him. And I don't know if those are all grants. I don't know if we're just asking for the money. But I think it's really great, we're going to hire somebody else. And then, I mean, we've got a, I'm sitting here looking, we hired, we hired the architects and the schematic engineers a year ago when they were getting ready to demolish the building, and we're still not done. So this means this project's going to be down the road a little farther. So I, I, I tend to agree that sometimes, I mean, we've got to get this going somehow. I don't want to do it. I don't want it to be like FEMA. If you, you know, if you spend the money before you get it, FEMA says, ah, you don't need the money. And I understand that. But I'm, I'm just saying, I think we can make a concentrated effort and, and see if we can get any funding out of, because I, I, I don't know, I don't know how many people we need to hire to go out and get it. And I just, I'm just saying, it seems like there's, you know, a certain amount of money that comes back through our congressman's office. And I think if we all asked politely, could we please get some help here? You know, and, and I would say, we get off the phone, I'll call, I may call over and find out how they did it over in Tahama and who they hired maybe, because they've got monies twice. Even if we got one of those, we did, would cover that. If we get to the four point four, it'd cover us. So. Go ahead.
So I just, where, could this come back as another item that, because I think that what this board hasn't realized, or they have, but we are very, trying to be very fiscal responsible, is that we had an item for a grant writer or, you know, that I really, I moved and nobody supported on because of these types of things, because staff doesn't have time. And so, you know, that $200,000 that that was going to cost us could have gained us millions. And we, we didn't recognize that. And we need to, around this conversation, it's exactly what Supervisor Wilson is saying, it's $200,000 that we could have already had this person onboard. So could this item to find monies for a grant writer come back if, and we vote on this motion now and have it come back next week or a week after?
On, on assistance specifically for this project?
I would, I mean, I would like specific assistance for, for lots of projects, not just specifically this one. There's monies out there. I think this is one that can be targeted, but there are other, that's why we had the Ferguson Group. So I, you know, think that we've already written that agenda item once. I don't know what, I mean, I have, I'm, right now, I'm not willing to change the motion. I don't want this project to be deflated.
My suggestion to that bit would be, because we, we don't want to move a project of this magnitude forward not having indicators from your board that there's a safety mechanism for funding it. So I think that you could provide direction to move with whichever option your board votes on, with the finance plan as the funding assurance with direction to staff to go seek other funding alternatives, so that we have that safety net of the finance plan, but staff has clear direction that they are to, to take concerted efforts to capitalize on other funding mechanisms that may be available. Should the Ferguson Group be able to assist us with that and we can reach out to them and find out what that might look like and what the cost around that might be, we can return to your board with direction for a supplemental budget to offset that cost.
So I'll add that to my motion, which Nikki captured, I believe, if the second is okay.
I am. Can I also suggest another addition to the motion of a letter directing staff to send a letter to, and I have reached out to Congressman Huffman and Senator Maguire's offices directly about this, but I think a letter authorized for our floorboard asking and identifying what the gap between the funding that Supervisor Madron was talking about, basically the moving over of the funds from the jail project into this pot. So it was like four point two, four, four point four. The gap between that and the total project cost, asking for like the two point.
Three.
Three million dollars to be a priority for funding. And I mean, I think it just raises it to their level of awareness. I know we asked for other earmarks through other processes, but this is one that, you know, there's specific funding streams for veterans' programs. So, you know, it can't hurt, is my thought.
And I'm, I'm okay with that addition. So it would be to direct staff to write a letter for. Yeah.
Or like a half, or like a half percent of the wind shore, the wind money.
To the, our congressman, I would say our congressman, our sen, our U.S. Senator, our state senator and our assembly member. Please and thank you.
And I agree with that, but it's going to come out of the feds because the state doesn't have, we're not going to get it from the state. I'm just sad but true.
So I'm okay with that addition.
The state will fund us if there's housing. There's still veterans' housing things, but.
Put an apartment on top. All right, Supervisor Madron.
Yeah, so, you know, I appreciate the conversation and where we're going with this. I mean, there's really two ways to do it. One, that's being suggested right now with the motion on the table, is to approve option one and all the funding to do it, which is probably seven million, you know, with increased costs, et cetera, by the time we build it. And the finance plan would pick up the slack over the current two point seven million plus the one point four, whatever it is from the jail. And that's really, what, four point one? But the other way to look at this is, one of the suggestions is, we select option one and we build what we can build now. And if that's the whole thing, but then we finish it with the money that we go get, that's another way to approach it. I mean, there's two different ways to do this, and I, I'm more comfortable with building within the budget of what we have without straining the budget for all these other facilities that we need to be dealing with. You know, because if we don't raise this other money, then we are basically saying we're going to let other facilities dilapidate and fall apart and get in the same place with other things. Versus taking the approach of, let's build the whole shell, let's build the whole thing, but maybe we don't finish out the kitchen right away. Maybe we don't, maybe it's a barbecue out in the back for a while or whatever it might be. But that's a more fiscally conservative approach, you know? I mean, how confident are we that we can get the money? I think we probably can get all that money. But I'm more comfortable with, let's build the whole thing, option one, but don't finish the interior parts of the whole thing. And that's a couple million that could probably be saved. I mean, I'm not a, an estimator on that level, but I know, as was said, kitchens and bathrooms cost a fortune. I think the bathrooms have to happen. They got to get finished, right? But a kitchen could come a year later if we get this ideal building that everybody's worked on designing and everything. So it's two different ways of approaching the same thing. One's a little bit more fiscally conservative. The other one, if we don't get the money, is going to strain our other facilities.
Around your chair.
Yes.
Sean, another item will come back to our board, right? When we're ready to go out to bid?
Yes.
And so we'll have an option, as Supervisor Wilson said earlier, we'll know more if we can grab some money from the feds or the states by the time that contract comes back.
Yeah.
And could modify that contract at that time. Is that correct?
I would say that's a fair statement, yes.
Yep, thank you.
Do you have an estimate when that time was going to be?
I mean, we actually have two more cost estimates built into our design process before we actually go to bid. So there's kind of a lot of meat on the bone here to evolve the design, even if we stick with option one. So.
No, I understand that. That, X the meat on the bone and everything else, what's, put, put a date on that, when the meat goes bad.
This year, let's say this year.
That's, go ahead.
Through the chair.
Please.
I appreciate what you said Supervisor Bushnell. That adds some level of comfort, and I hope you can appreciate that we're really trying to be fiscally responsible here, and we have a lot more than just this hall. We've got a whole, as a, you know, as a board. We got a lot on our plate. We're going to need to help from everybody. So start raising the funds as well, going out and figuring out how we can all help. And as was just mentioned by Supervisor Bushnell, there are other decision points on this before we finalize. But it sounds like we're probably going to move forward with option one, and I suspect that's going to bring a lot of joy to a lot of people and rightfully so. You deserve this. And I, I get, I believe we can probably pull it together and make it work, so. You shifted my vote, so whatever. Through the chair.
Supervisor Wilson.
Well, I don't, yeah, I'm just going to be the one dissenting vote on this. And that's not because I don't want this to happen. I really, really, really do. I just feel like there needs to at least be one voice of caution as we move forward. And, and, yeah, there, I mean, there's actually many voices of caution here, but just one vote that represents it. I want success for this. I want a place that veterans deserve, a place of belonging in Southern Humboldt. I think it's absolutely imperative. I just want to make sure that, that we're doing it as responsibly as we possibly can. And I'll be supportive of that when that plan is put together. So thanks.
All right, I.
I was just wondering for calling for the vote.
Yeah, yeah, unless anybody else wants to explain their vote. Okay.
Okay, thank you Chair Bone. We'll start with you.
Yes, just because after all this time, it's due.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Absolutely.
Supervisor Wilson?
No for the explanation I gave.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four to one.
We're going to tick a, we got a 1:30 anyway. What have we got? Oh, we got a one o'clock, we're going to do our one o'clock in five minutes, please.
All right, thanks guys. Thank you. Sorry if we were dropped.
Too late Pierre, too late Pierre. I'd like to open the public hearing.
John Ford and Sarah Quinnell with the Funding and Building Department to present the Duport Code Enforcement Appeal Hearing. This is an appeal of the costs associated with the abatement. And so what I'd like to do is give a quick presentation of what has been done and the costs associated with accomplishing that. So the board has two basic decisions to make. One is whether or not the cost is appropriate, and two, whether or not the property owner's responsible for the cost. This is a code enforcement action that dates back to 2015. It was renewed in 2022 or 2021 when we received second, second set of complaints and began to investigate it. This is a picture of the site. And we issued a notice to abate and a notice of violation. Initially offered the property owner a compliance agreement in, it was August or October of 2023. And then as of, or as October of 2022 and as of October of 2023, the compliance agreement had been breached, nothing had been done to clean up the site. There was also, there was a substandard house on the site that was demolished but not removed. And then there was solid waste on the site, as you can see in the pictures that are being shown. This is a picture of a portion of the substandard structure that was there. And there was a significant amount of solid waste. So when it became time for a decision, the property owner had been indicating they would clean up the site for over a year, but there was no progress being made. So the county chose to pursue the abatement. The county went through its normal process to bring on an abatement contractor to have the material removed. There was 19 tons of solid waste removed from the site. There was hazardous materials removed from the site. It required the use of a dump truck, a skid steer, and then using Caltrans prevailing rates to calculate the costs. The abatement cost was a total of $21,691.41 to remove all of the material from the site. And the unpermitted. And the unpermitted structure, as I mentioned before, was dropped, but it was not removed. That's a picture of the, the structure laying on the ground. These are now pictures of what the site looks like post-abatement. So as I mentioned, the, the question before you, the property owner is contesting the cost and is also contesting whether or not they should be responsible for the cost. They're given the length of time that it took to get this resolved required the county to step in and conduct the abatement. We followed our normal process, normal costs. There's nothing abnormal about this. We believe that it is acceptable and normal for the cost to be $21,691 and that the property owner is responsible for it. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I'm wondering if there are still payment plan options if the board so chooses to stick with the cost?
If the board would be willing to consider that, that is something the board could direct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Row?
No comment at this time. I'd like to hear from the other party.
Okay.
Mr. Duport, you want to?
My first rodeo, guys. Okay. Number one, this whole thing is sort of a result of the COVID issue. The state, the renters I had in there were under the COVID agreement, and the state was going to pay the money, and every time I was approached on doing cleanup, I said, as soon as the money comes in, it will be done. And we worked on it. We took out, we thought we had all the hazardous waste out. We had most everything packed. All the insulation was in bags. All the sheet rock was in bags, in boxes. Everything was loaded by trailers, ready to take off. All we needed was the money. On the two days before I was called to say that they were going to clean up the property, I explained to them that I had, COVID did not come in. However, I had sold a piece of property, a mobile home, two years previous. The couple divorced, and I had a check for $30,000 deposited in my account Friday after I was told they were going to tear the place up on Thursday. I called into the office and I explained, I said, look, I got the check. It's in my, being deposited Friday. Everything's ready to go. I've got trucks and trailers. I've got people to help me. And we're ready to take the rest of the stuff out of there. We've already taken the hazardous waste off. We've got everything packed up and ready. There were three cars on there, a truck and a, a big, one of those big bread trucks. All those had been removed since the time of the thing. Most of the auto parts had been taken out of there. Everything was lined up on one side, and we had, like I said, the building was down. We were going to disassemble it, salvage all the wood. We had everything ready to go on that. So when I called into the office and I said, look, the money is there coming in Friday, I need an extension, three or four days, whatever, because we're ready to go. And I was told, I'm sorry, Mr. Duport, but you didn't put it in writing, so we can't give you an extension, too bad. And that ended it. And they came in the next day and tore it down. The money was in the bank on Friday, and I'm willing to bring in my bank statement to show that 30,000 came in and that I was ready to take, stand up to what I agreed to do to clean up the property. This whole thing got started from being locked into the COVID thing, and I'd like my son to speak to that, if he could. Same name, so we're not clearing anything out.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm John Jr. Yeah, what my dad was alluding to is subsequently the, the renters that we had there in that, well, obviously, they didn't keep very good house, and it was a real pain. The first group that was in that signed the lease agreement, they seemed to be pretty decent, and they were cleaning up the mess from the prior person that was squatting. And he was having issues. He brought, he sublet to his mother, and it, there was a snowball effect. We ended up with these people there that we didn't know who they were. Very intimidating bunch. You probably heard the name Michael Aubrey before. Anyway, tattoos all over the place. Not that I have a problem with that, but that's not how I set myself up. So my dad was a little, dad was a little apprehensive about telling this guy, needs to get off the property. Big old dude with tats all over his face, been in prison, and I wasn't real comfortable about it either. I was living next door, but I had a pretty good size dog that I was going to sick on if I had to. But he promised my dad that he was going to be involved in the COVID program, and when that was all settled, he would, you know, be paid. And, and so I did some research, and I found out that, yes, in fact, he did apply for COVID, and there was a, a case number. I also applied. I, I was approved, then denied, approved, then denied, and it was over a technicality. I mean, I've got my paperwork here, and it was like, and it was something about my son's proof of income wasn't current, and I gave him the information, but that's beside the point. So what I, what I'm trying to say is, my father would have had enough money to handle it even if the COVID went through. Or even more importantly, he would have evicted these people, but because of the laws at the time, we understand that you couldn't evict anyone during the pandemic. So it was kind of a catch-22. And so it was a big snowball effect, and I think that's pretty much all I really wanted to say about that. And, oh, and the other thing was, we're wondering about the address. We keep getting this documentation. Let's see, we're at 1987 Peninsula Drive, and
I've owned the property since 30 some odd years. And I never have heard of 1989 Peninsula Drive. My property was 1987, apartment A, B, and C. It's always been that way. Any of my tenants, you can talk to them. That's all I've ever seen. When I saw, found this sign posted on my property saying 1989, I went, what, what's going on here? I came to the courthouse. I researched it. I have pictures in here of the property locations. And you have a property strip there. The first property is 1981. The second one is 1985, which I had owned in the past, and it was one that was cleaned up and abated. The next property was my 1987. The next one is 2001, 2003. The next one is 2011, and then 1987. Now, if there was a 1989, and we have, my property is a double piece, it's not split, but it's a double piece, would 1989 be here and 1987 be here when it's out of chronological order? I think some would be pretty, pretty hard pressed.
Was the piece of property that was cleaned up yours?
It was 1987.
I'm not asking about the address. Was the piece of property you cleaned up?
Yes.
That had to be cleaned up yours, okay. That was my first question, so that, I clerical, clerical's not enough to escape this one, but I'm just, I'm just saying, there wasn't, there wasn't error in the address. The, the other thing is, you had everybody lined up and trailers and, and the dump and everything else done. Were they all going to work for free?
Family, yes.
I understand. That's not necessarily true for families.
No, you're true.
But, but your family doesn't own the dump site, so you're going to have to pay the $420 a ton there and everything else. I'm, I'm trying to figure out, I just, on the, the 21,000, if there's any question, I mean, there's quite a big portion of that you weren't going to escape, appliances, everything else, and things like that. There is, maybe you could explain, but it sounds like the proper, you didn't follow any of the guidelines till the, it's like fixing the hole in the boat after it's almost all the way sunk. It's too late. And I, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but the $30,000 I kept hearing about, what was that for?
Thirty, I thought I explained it. I sold a mobile home previously, three or four years ago. The young couple that bought it got a divorce, and they called me, and they said, we're selling the, the mobile home, and we're paying off the first.
Okay.
And that was the first.
Okay, I, I heard COVID in there, and I didn't understand what the 30,000 had to do with COVID.
So, well, the COVID money is what I was going to clean it up with, because that was over $29,000.
That's in excess. That's separate from the 30,000, okay.
But, but COVID could give money to someone living on the beach, but they couldn't give it to a landlord that, you know, onward.
Understood, okay. That answers my question. Thank you, sir. Supervisor Bushnell?
Well, my question was around the COVID money, too, was that was for back rents that you were going to get?
Right.
Because they were
COVID money. And so now, the, the thing of it is, all my credit cards were empty. And because not having any money coming in, because the COVID money didn't come in, I had to use my credit card to pay my bills.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry about that. That happened a lot. But I, I, along with what Supervisor Bone said, you know, that, that looks like years of accumulation of stuff. And I don't, regardless of family helped you, it still would cost you money to, to dispose of all that. I'm wondering what you think is appropriate amount to pay for that cleaning?
I figured it probably was going to cost me at least $5,000, the way I had everything set up to haul up to trash in.
Director Ford, do you have a cost just for disposal?
Yes.
I, I could look in my staff report, but I'm going to ask. I'm sorry.
It's broken down. Let me pull it out. I don't have it off the top of my head.
We also have movies of the whole cleanup, too.
I, you know, I, I feel for your situation. However, you know, we, the county has to do their job, and we already did that job and cleaned up your facility, your place. Do you have someone living there now? No?
It's an empty lot.
It's an empty lot, okay. So I'm just curious on the disposal.
Yeah, well, you, you mentioned that they already did it, but like I say, two days later, I would have had it done.
I, I understand, sir.
From the very start, I said, when I got the money, I would do it. I kept, was willing to keep my word. But my word obviously wasn't good enough.
I, I think that it, you know, stems from a year-long process, not just a week to two.
This was just a sort of a, a picture that they gave you, but things were done, things were taken off, things were cleaned up off of there. And these, this Aubrey kept dragging crap in. The red house there.
Hold on, I think Director Ford has something.
The fee for, the dumping fees were 41, 59, 56.
And then the rest was for the labor?
Correct, and, and equipment.
And equipment. The fees were 41, 59. Okay, thank you.
Let me open this for, is there any public comment on this? Okay. Seeing none, there's nobody online either. Okay, Supervisor Row?
I am curious about the options. So can, can this be a lien against the properties that it is paid at sale? Is that a, a common process that we?
So there's, there's two options here. Option one would be for the property owner to pay it now. Actually, there's three. Option two would be to pay it as part of the tax bill within the next three years. And then opt, and then option three would be that if it's not, if the debt is not addressed, then it would be sold at, at tax sale.
So you would sell the whole place, my two houses. Now, so when this happened, the first thing I did is I went into the county, not the code enforcement side, the other side, and I said, what would it cost me to split the lots? Because I figured, okay, let's split this lot off, pay off the money if I have to, and pay off the rest of my bills that were caused from the, from the COVID. Makes sense. Probably, the lot would probably sell for 120,000 to 150,000. Okay, so what happened? They told me, well, you have to get a TESMI report, and that's going to cost you many thousand dollars. And so it's not wise for you to do this, okay? Why can't they take and tax each person over there and do a report instead of sticking out one person or make each individual do it? Okay, that's all I'm saying.
All right, thank you, sir. You can sit back down. You answered my question. Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Director Ford, if this board moves forward with the owners responsible, what does that look like in the future?
I'm not sure if I understand the question.
So if he doesn't pay it, what's it look like?
If he does not pay it, then the treasure tax collector would take the, the property, and there would be a lien against it. A, there would be a lien against the property unless he pays it immediately.
Right.
So if he doesn't pay it immediately, a loan would be, or lien, sorry, would be imposed against the property. And then if it accrues over a period of three years and isn't paid, then the property would, would be sold at a tax auction.
Okay, so, sir, could you come back up? I have one question for you. So if this board directs that you have to pay this money, are you able to do that?
Right now, if the COVID money comes in.
That's what you said before. So if this board moves forward, you're going to have an obligation to pay that money, or your property is going to be sold, or you could set up a payment plan if this board chooses.
Or I could sell my property and pay it.
Yeah, so, so I'm just asking you, because I, I probably think the, well, I don't want to say, but the county can't be out the money either, and so.
Well, I, obviously, I'll take a payment plan.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking. So, so I'm going to, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'm going to make a motion that, for staff's recommendation, which the, you would be liable for the money, and to direct the planning department to set up a payment, payment plan with you so that you can pay over time to get this amount cleared up.
Will this be unencumbered with interest, or would this be just paying off the, the money, period?
The debt, really, at this point, is board's discretion, and I would also ask that you would consider what the timeframe for payback is so that we can establish a regular rhythm of, of payments.
So I think that I, I could add to my motion that as long as you make your, your payments monthly, that it would be uncumbered, no, no interest. But if you miss a payment, then they're going to put interest on, and that it be paid over, what do you think, Director Ford?
Two years.
Two years?
Three years.
Three years?
Three years would be.
Three years? Does that work for you, sir?
14 would be better, because I don't think I'll make past 100.
Three years. With no interest.
Yeah, I, I, I don't agree on the total amount.
Okay, but that's my motion, so if I can get a second on that.
I may second on the pretense, and, and just so you understand, just so you understand, if you miss a payment, all interest, we'll give you a rate, but all interest will be. So basically, that's an incentive to pay. Otherwise, you're going to have to, all interest, interest will be applied, including the missing payments and going forward. It's a good deal, trust me. All you got to do is make it over. It, with, with no interest, we're, you know, it's, it's, you're looking, yeah.
It sounds good, but I, I I, I think, I think that there should be something helping along the COVID lines for
Well, and, and we don't, we don't control that, but what I think, what we're setting up is a $650 a month payment with no interest, which, which is, which is as good a deal as you're going to get. I mean, with no interest, it's going to go up rapidly if you don't pay it. So I mean, that's, and we can't control what money has already been spent, even though it was a day before, but you, in all honesty, we have to look back. The, the original case was opened in 2015. It was opened in 2015, and then they gave you another 14 months. And then all of a sudden, they didn't give you another 24 hours, and that was what caused all the problem, was that 24 hours. It's, I, I understand the argument, but it's, it's, it's hard to justify that because you're not the only one we're going to have this issue with going down the line, or the only one we've had this issue. And this is as good as deals you're probably going to get. You just needed to call your friends and family a week earlier. So anyway, that's, that's what the motion has been made and seconded, so. Thank you. So anyway, that's, that's what the motion has been made and seconded, so, thank you. You can sit down. Supervisor Wilson?
I appreciate us moving forward with this. I appreciate the staff's work on this. The community of Manila, this is not the only location where we've had some issues. And I do really actually hear the property owners' story, narrative about the, what can happen when you have some renters that can really take things sideways, and how quickly that can really lose control. And I have to say, in, it's not an uncommon situation, and something we need to really keep track of. And I know as family members, it's probably difficult sometimes, because sometimes the capacity of of the of the property owner isn't, is, you know, there's just a lot going on. And it can be very, and these changes can happen very swiftly. And so it takes vigilance, not just sometimes the owner, but the neighbors too, to to be on it and helpful. And so I think this is a decent resolution. It's not a fun or comfortable story that we are dealing with. But I want to thank staff for, I do know that you guys are working really hard to help these community members get past these situations. So I'm hoping that this place stays clean and without, without more garbage. And I hope that if you have tenants there in the future, that they are so much better than what you've had in the past, so.
I just, no. Thank you, no. But I do, I I am gonna throw one more thing out there, just for a quick point of clarification. If he wants to move forward and sell this, if he wants to do the lot line adjustment, pay for the lot line, get out, and then, since it's encumbered, he would have to pay off his debt. But would we still be under, would we be able to do the lot line adjustment so he can sell the lot to get out? There's no reason to, because it's interest-free, but I'm just, do you follow what I'm asking?
Yes, he would need to settle the debt before the property could be subdivided.
Okay, that's, okay, so that's not an option there for him. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Are you ready for the vote?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Chair Bone?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five-zero. Thank you, sir, for coming in.
And I'll close the public hearing.
Two thousand and ten, Benetton. Five years I've looked at that trash.
We hear you.
And with that, I will have County Council read in our closed session.
I was just curious.
Oh, that's right.
Before we go, and and could we wait a little bit? Super quick, your next one, right?
It's a public hearing. The planner didn't think we would get to it before one-thirty and left. I I don't mind doing it if you want to try to do it, but.
I'm.
It's just, I don't think it's gonna be very long.
Scott, can we wait? Can we postpone fifteen minutes?
It depends on how long the board wants to talk about it. Our presentation doesn't need to be long, this is not complicated.
All right, Scott, is we okay to go? Okay. I'm good with that.
Just get it on, right? Thank you to Carol Reisch.
It's okay, I need to find the the board report here real quick. Actually. You need to read this in first. So John Ford, with the Planning and Building Department, to present the parcel map, or it's not a parcel map, but it's a rezone for the Strombach property. This parcel, this request for a rezone, it also included a parcel map that the Planning Commission approved, is to basically take agricultural general piece property, rezone it to, from allowing a minimum of ten-acre size to a minimum of five-acre size. And, trying to pull up, I'm sorry, the board, the presentation that we prepared for this.
It's on Elizabeth Lane, I believe, up off of Murray Road.
It 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 is, and the property is currently designated in the general plan, I'm gonna wing it, I'm sorry. It's designated RA, residential agricultural from five to twenty acres. That came out of the two thousand and seventeen general plan. That, so this request to rezone is really consistent with what was done in two thousand and seventeen. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this on the consent calendar. There was a letter that was received late in the day, of the day of the Planning Commission hearing, asking some questions, but those questions never got in front of the Planning Commission, it was not removed from consent. So the, that was not part of the record. That same commenter presented questions to the board. And those questions basically had to do with whether or not the general plan and the approach to considering these parcel maps take into account climate change and and those issues associated with that, and the answer to that is yes. The general plan did take into account climate change. It does require as part of the implementation that the, a climate action plan be prepared. And so it's, it wasn't silent on climate change. There was also some concern about sensitive natural habitat, given the fact that there is a spruce forest on the property and whether or not that's taken it in consideration. The general plan did consider sensitive natural habitats, recognizing that any future actions would be by discretionary action, which this is a parcel map. And there was a separate biological report prepared for this, identifying that the area of the building envelopes would not affect the spruce forest. And so there's a requirement on the parcel map to require that the building envelope be shown within a development plan that will be recorded on the property to show where building can take place and where it cannot. And so the, the report identified where the building envelope is, and that will be implemented at that time. So the area of the spruce forest will be protected, consistent with the general plan and the EIR for the general plan. And then the request was whether or not we consult with CDFW, Cal Fire, the Fire Department, and the answer to all those is yes. The only comment we got back was from CDFW. They wanted a modification to the requirement for when tree removal could be done to address migratory birds. That is a condition of the parcel map, so their comments were included within the parcel map. So what's before the board today is to modify the zoning on the property from AG ten acre minimum to AG five acre minimum. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Sorry, it's a little bit hurried and rushed, but.
Supervisor Wilson?
The envelopes involved, does that include if there's a future or proposed ADU as part of the development? It would also be within those envelopes?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and, okay, I I appreciate that. And then you, I I tried to, I looked up the site, but I couldn't get, because I just didn't really have an address necessarily. But do you feel like there would be any potential for view shed impacts?
Not at this location.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, so it's currently just under fifteen-acre parcel, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so with this change, it would go from one parcel to two parcels?
That is correct.
One parcel would be ten acres, the other slightly smaller than five acres, or the other way around.
Nine point nine eight, five point oh.
Right, five acres and slightly smaller than ten acres.
Right, right.
And the house and the ADU sites would all be within areas that are already cleared, that aren't gonna require clearing of spruce forest?
That is correct.
Well, I appreciate the commenter, I I believe she's here and will make comments as well, but I believe, you know, I appreciated the comments that she brought up, because there's been a lot of removal of spruce forest up on that hill in regards to the Boprea Estates and other projects that have occurred. Although with that one, they did set aside the oldest part of that spruce forest. And as each of those lots develop, they're gonna have to deal with individual three-acre minimums, or three-acre conversion permits, et cetera, to build the houses, because there, the subdivision permits allowed for the road construction, but not the house clearing. So that's gonna be an issue as we come forward with all of those, I mean, a hundred, a hundred and fifty parcels or something like that.
Correct.
Quite a, quite a few parcels, right. But in this case, the area is already cleared.
There, there.
For the house and ADUs.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a meadow area that's within the building envelope, and then there was an area that had trees in it. But the understory had been so significantly modified that the biologist did not believe that it reflected the spruce forest. And so that was included within the building envelope as well. But everything that was still native spruce forest is is not within the building envelope.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else, I'll open this up to public comment.
I think my, Joyce King from McKinleyville, I own a property across the street from there. So I've owned that property for twenty-four years, but, anyway, close to. And I have seen a lot of changes in the condition of the forest and the water table in those years. So I'm not sure that that what I, what my, if my concerns can address, or addressable to this particular project, but I I worry that the cumulative effects have not been properly evaluated. And I I don't think it should be exempt from some kind of environmental assessment based on that, on the, whether or not the effects of full build-out in this area have been properly evaluated, meaning the availability of water, the fire resistance of the forest, because I've noticed drying out of that area. The, that, we're on tributaries, two tributaries to Strawberry Creek. And there were two year-round tributaries on my property that drain into Duke Creek, which is one of the tributaries to Strawberry, to Creek. And that, those tributaries have noticeably shrunk. It used to be that no matter what time of year, winter, summer, rainy, you know, not rainy, those tributaries had water in them. It's, the the line of where the water starts now has descended quite a bit toward Duke Creek on my property. And so I worry about whether or not this forest is going to become more and more flammable. And it's right on the urban rural boundary, I I think, you know, it's, for a long time, people have had, used to be able to say that there's no chance that we could have fire in this forest. It's so moist all year round. And it used to be that no matter where you would dig in this, in, in, at least on my property, there, you would hit moist soil. It never really truly dried out. And so I understand that now that we, that this area has been rezoned, there will be double the number of allowable parcels, it, you know, down from ten acre minimum, oh, sorry, ten acre minimums to five. And with the housing allowances going up to.
Thank you.
Three per parcel, that is a big concern. And I don't know if those were addressed in the original EIR.
Thank you. Please.
Joyce, if you could come back up, please, Ms. King. Is your parcel developed?
We have one house.
One house?
It's a twenty-acre parcel.
Twenty acre, okay. And I think it's two buildings per parcel, not three.
Well, I just read something about in two thousand and twenty-four, the state has asked for ADUs and junior ADUs.
But you can do only one of those.
Oh, one, one, either one, one, either an ADU or a junior ADU?
So there could be three residences?
Through the chair. So if if the property owner is going to live there, it is possible to do both an ADU and a J-ADU, a junior.
Is a J-ADU attached?
A J-ADU can be attached or unattached.
Okay.
And it's limited to like four hundred square feet.
Okay, but there could be three residences.
That is correct.
Yeah, so that, like, triples the number per parcel, and then the parcel, the number of parcels are potentially doubled.
Thank you.
All right, I'll bring it back. Nice job, Rodney. I'll bring it back to the board. No, I mean, you you nailed it, son. Good job.
We jumped ahead for board prep, I'm sorry. Do you guys want to see my presentation?
No.
No.
Sorry, boss.
I was hoping you were gonna get a double-double and take longer to eat it.
Sorry, Rodney, this was my idea.
With that, I'll bring it, I'll bring it back. John?
Yeah, could I just clarify one thing?
Yes.
The recommendation is not to find this exempt from CEQA.
Yes.
But to find that it has been evaluated in the context of the general plan.
Understood.
And the general plan policies are being implemented, and that's where the additional environmental analysis and
What happened?
reviews have have occurred.
Yep. I'll bring it. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, thank you, Director Ford. I will say, up there on the hill, off Murray Road, there has been a lot of parcelization, and now there'll be more. And there has been a lot of cumulative impact to that spruce forest up there that's occurred over the years. So that does concern me, although this is a little different than the hundred and some parcels created in the Boprea Estates. It's still a piece of the cumulative, you know, picture. Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I'll make a motion for staff's recommendations.
I'll second, if I could speak to the motion.
Please, speak.
The, the, I I do wanna give voice to the concern that our CEQA review in terms of, in terms of the general plan and in terms of impacts for residential development in these areas, in natural resource areas, although this did not take into account the manifestation of SB nine and subsequent legislative, or legislation that now is properly noted by the, by the commenter, can allow up to three units within the envelope. And we really did not evaluate water impacts and other, and and wildlife impacts or or other impacts associated with that, lighting, noise, erosion, all those things that can come from just the traffic. And even, we did at that time, when we did it, we, we did say there would be a significant impact due to traffic in, you know, within our core areas. And even that was underestimated based on that, this potential. So I just, it's just interesting, and I I don't know where to address that necessarily, but it's something we want to keep on our radar. This is both an impact to not just the use of water, but also now you have three units that are actually producing wastewater into the system and and into those watersheds. And so, especially in ones where people are drawing water, this could be something of concern. I do know that the authors of SB nine did not. I do know that the authors of SB 9 did not intend to, they didn't really think about where areas they, I've talked to them about it, talked to the senator who drafted it, and they did not have an understanding that this would be applied in areas that didn't have services. So with that, I do know, I do recognize that our current general plan moved to, if we'd actually done our zoning ordinance, by now this has already been done, so we wouldn't even be having this conversation, so, thank you.
Any, there's nobody online, right? Okay, it's been moved and seconded?
Thank you, Chair Bone. Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes, and thank you for coming to share that.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor, or sorry, Chair Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Madron?
No.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 4-1.
With that, I will turn to you. Great job, Rodney. How was lunch? Fast, fast?
Well, that was the way it was scheduled.
Rod, you don't have to come back at 2:00 now.
All right, you bet.
Scott?
Thank you, Chair Bone. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54956.9 D2 and E3, in order to discuss exposure to litigation in one potential case regarding the claim for damages submitted by Jennifer Del Rey Soloranza Solerzano Hernandez. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54956.9 D1, in order to discuss existing litigation in the case of Pepper Lopez versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV 2201798.
And with that, are we going to go straight in there? Is everybody in favor of going straight in there?
Can I have five minutes to heat up some food? Two minutes? I know. I'm going to bring food in with me, just so everybody knows.
All right.
Public comment?
Is there a public comment? Okay.
There was no reportable action taken with regard to items G3 and G4.
Thank you very much. And with that, good job, everybody, today. It was kind of intense and mind-boggling, but thank you, everybody, for their time. We are adjourned.